Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At all workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. The agenda packet is available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. And then please note that the city council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is being also televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Through Proclamation Number 20-28.4, Governor Inslee extended the directive making temporary changes to the Open Public Meetings Act. These virtual meetings will continue until the OPMA restrictions are lifted. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions for items not on the agenda through contacting the city manager, or city clerk, or using the feedback form on the city's website. So with that out of the way, thank you for, again, thank you for being here tonight. I want to just continue to stress that we are adhering to the governor's orders and TDC guidelines to maintain our distance, using masks whenever we're within six feet from each other. We have disinfectant and hand sanitizer over in the back, and everything's been sanitized here prior to the meetings to ensure our safety, and we hope that everybody does the same there. And I'm committed to keep announcing that every week that we come here for a meeting, because as we all know, our numbers are still not where they need to be for us to be where we want to be in the reopening of our economy and of our businesses throughout the city. But we're working and working hard to try to communicate that, to keep things in order and in our community safe. So with that, I'd like to start with the roll call, please.
Councilmembers. Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Portem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here.
All seven accounted for.
All right, and thank you all for showing up. At this time, could we all please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. Go to item number four, verbal reports from councilmembers. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share in this section of the meeting?
Mayor Martinez, this is Mayor Portem Barajas, and just want to share real quick that I attended the protest on Saturday for the Black Lives Matter. I just want to report that it was extremely peaceful. There were people praying, singing along with music, just waving their signs. Just, it was, I was amazed of how peaceful and how everyone was getting along so well. A lot of support from the community. I did see councilmember Alvarado out there, thank you for showing up, and councilwoman Roach also showed up as well. I was only there for about an hour, so I got to see unity in our community, and I'm very proud of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barajas. Anybody else? I actually have a comment that I'm going to save for miscellaneous items, so I'm going to wait. If there's nobody else that would like to say something, we'll move right along, as we have a lot of things in our items for discussion today. We'll start with 5A, the CPA 2020-001 Urban Growth Area Expansion. Do we have, let's see, Mr. White, are you on?
I am, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And just very briefly, I just want to introduce Jacob Gonzalez, the city's senior planner, who has really taken this project and run with it. He's doing a very, very good job on a very complex issue. But I'm sure council is familiar with the scenario. We have a 20-year, well, now it's an 18-year population estimate of about 121,000 people by the year 2038, and the ability to accommodate that population is being analyzed through an environmental impact statement with the, with three very distinct options for expanding our urban growth area. So Mr. Gonzalez is going to brief council on the amount of complexity that has gone into this and try to summarize this very high-level planning document that is going to address that roughly 48,000-person population growth in the next 18 years.
Thank you, Mr. White, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Again, to reiterate, Mr. Director White said that tonight's presentation will focus on the urban growth area, and while we're going to talk about the comprehensive plan, the land uses, and the environmental impact statement, tonight's presentation is focused on the urban growth area, because that is the first, a very critical first step for us to move forward with the rest of our efforts for the Planning Division. So I've got a presentation prepared for you to kind of cover a little bit about the background of the process and the efforts we've gone through. The comprehensive plan in urban growth area, obviously mandated by the Growth Management Act, and I wanted to reiterate a critical component, I thought, of the urban growth area specifically, and it kind of leads into the rest of this discussion this evening, and as we move through the summer with our comprehensive plan efforts, and that is that the urban growth area should be reserved for urban levels of density and development, and we should try to preserve that as much as we can and foster in the appropriate development patterns. And you'll begin to see that throughout this presentation of why that's critical for us to keep in mind as we continue to grow as a city. So this is obviously just some background information that tells us exactly what the urban growth area is about, required obviously by the GMA, and responsible by each county to designate or approve the UGA for each city. So why? Obviously, the city of Pasco, we all know, has grown tremendously. We've added roughly 45,000 residents since 2000. The Washington State Office of Financial Management provides a forecast for us and has indicated that Pasco will add an additional 48,000-plus residents prior to the, by the year 2038. That's equivalent, based on today's average household size, of over 15,000 housing units. So early on in the process, we already knew that an expansion of the UGA was going to be necessary, and so we'll talk a little bit about the process that we took internally as staff and with our consultants to develop an appropriate urban growth area alternative. So again, this began in 2018, and you may remember that in June, there was a resolution approved by the Pasco City Council that at that time identified an alternative of approximately 47, 4800 acres, that identified a preferred alternative. At that time, the delineation of that boundary was conducted using the existing land use development trends and patterns that went through its public process, obviously in front of city council, and that process itself is really what kicked off the development of a scoped EIS, the Environmental Impact Statement for the Comprehensive Plan, that identified that the city and staff would conduct an analysis on three proposed alternatives. One would be a no-growth, a no-expansion of the UGA, so keeping it the same. The second alternative was what was proposed, alternative number two, the estimated 4800 acres. And the third one was a new, a new UGA that was focused more on increased densities, taking into account comments received by the public, by local state agencies, for a more compact development pattern. So that should say December 2018, but between December 2018 and in the fall of this, or winter of this year, the city went through a land capacity analysis that also allowed us to develop more of the comprehensive plan itself, along with the environmental impact statement and the associated facility plans and infrastructure evaluations required by these documents. I do want to note that the draft Environmental Impact Statement for the Comprehensive Plan is publicly available. It was released on Friday, May 15th, the 30-day public comment period ends on June 15th, and by last count, we've received over 30 or so comments from a variety of members of the public and state agencies, so we're getting that out there quite well. So as I mentioned, the land capacity analysis, this is something that I don't know if Pasco has ever done before, and it's not seen much east of the Cascades. It's usually required of the Puget Sound and the larger metropolitan areas, but this was a direct recommendation from staff by Franklin County, and also from staff, the Growth Management Division, by the, from the Washington State Department of Commerce. And so what the land capacity analysis enables staff to do is to take a refined look at existing land within the city limits and within our urban growth area, and identify how much capacity we have prior to establishing an urban growth area. So through this process, we took at underutilized and vacant residential parcels or anywhere else, so some of our commercial zoning does allow residential dwelling units, so we took a look at that, and we use that as an opportunity to identify where we had existing capacity within the city limits. So this is your infill, this is redevelopment. The, we took guidance from the Washington State Department of Commerce, also looked at what other jurisdictions had conducted throughout their lands analysis, and the result of this indicated that we had 600 acres or so of vacant residential land in the city, 160 or so underutilized, and the difference of that is vacant, obviously, is there's no structures, there's no housing on top of a parcel or a lot of land. Underutilized is where there may be an existing housing unit, however, that lot has further potential to subdivide. And I do want to, Broadmoor was considered separately, because Broadmoor's going through its own analysis itself, but we did incorporate the results of Broadmoor into the urban growth area discussion. But with the citywide and UGA vacant and underutilized lands, we, it's mathematical exercise. We also have to take into account that a two-acre parcel technically at RS12 can have seven or eight housing units, but you also need to deduct your right-of-way, your environmental and your market factor considerations, and this is all guidance provided by the Washington State Department of Commerce. And so the final result of the land capacity analysis indicated that of that 48,000 or so residents, we had capacity for about 63% or 30,000 or so residents to accommodate within our existing UGA, and that then fed directly into what we need to expand our UGA by, and the result was an estimated 3,500 acres. So this...
Gonzalez, may I ask a question before you move on to the next slide?
Yeah, absolutely.
The pink area that you've shown as land capacity analysis, is that just, how is that projected, at what density of use?
That's a good question. We, obviously, Commerce recommends for those counties that are doing this as a requirement, conduct surveys to individual properties. This isn't a requirement for the city of Pasco, so in order to take a conservative approach, whatever the existing zoning was, we left it the same. So if the current zoning was RS12 or RS20, we left it at that level, because we didn't want to, I guess, be overly aggressive, specifically in the area that you kind of see here in the Riverview area. We have a lot of vacant and underutilized parcels there, but when you take a ground-level look, a lot of these parcels are landlocked, they have no access to public frontage. Those that do have access to roads may not have the best accessibility, so you have roads that may not, even with some improvements, may not be the best or most practical to increase density. And this will come up later on in the discussion this evening, where we talk about, does growth actually pay for growth? This is an interesting area to take a look at, specifically because there is quite a bit of land available here, but it's not necessarily practical due to, you know, historic planning practices.
So, Mr. Gonzalez, one more follow-up question on that. I didn't, I noticed that in the map that was shown, there was an asterisk in the table, citywide UGA, only that the Broadmoor area survey was conducted separately. Does that include the Harris Farm property that was recently sold?
It does, and a big reason for that, obviously, is because Broadmoor's been going through its own intensive analysis, and it's ongoing, but also because this is a parcel-level analysis. If you were to look at the Broadmoor area, you don't have more than a few dozen parcels, and so that's why we had to take into account what was already developed for Broadmoor, roughly estimated of about 7,000 housing units, and incorporated that into the land capacity analysis. But yes, to answer your question, it does include the Harris property.
Okay, thank you.
So I do have a quick question, this is Councilman Serrano. You mentioned that some of these parcels that were highlighted in pink were landlocked. Do we foresee a lot of right-of-way abandonment actions that would be required to make these unlandlocked, or some of these city parcels privately owned? And I don't need a direct proportion, but just kind of a general gist of what type of additional legwork we're going to need to free up that land, if the owners are willing to do so. Thank you.
Yeah, great question. And actually, council, if you remember, about this time last year, you actually approved the shared-street frontage ordinance, which was aimed actually at the Riverview area to allow for some of these harder-to-develop parcels that did not have access to public frontage to subdivide with minimal private access, so you could have up to three or four units, depending on the lot size or the zoning requirements. So council has addressed some of that through that ordinance, but moving forward, it'll also take some, some additional creativity and flexibility within our zoning standards to allow for some of these harder-to-develop parcels to actually realize their full development potential.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that we took a forward-looking action towards this action, so I appreciate your insight there.
Absolutely. So this slide here compares the urban growth alternatives that have been identified for the environmental impact statement of the comprehensive plan. That purple boundary, it might be hard to see, but that's our existing UGA. The area highlighted in yellow is the alternative number two, roughly 3,500 acres, and what you see in that light pink-red shade is the additional land that was identified for alternative number three. So obviously, 3,500 acres is a significant decrease from what was proposed in alternative number two, almost 30%. We were able to do that by implementing a variety of land uses and the future land use that will come up actually in the next slide, but also when we come back for the comprehensive plan. We also identified that the city of Pasco's jobs-to-household ratio is something that we should take a deeper look at. In general, you want the job-to-household ratio to be at least one-to-one, meaning one household has at least one job. And later on in the discussion, we'll dive a little bit deeper into that, but also the industrial capacity was also considered, so there was added industrial growth, and the land capacity analysis allowed us to decrease the total UGA expansion area by utilizing infill and redevelopment opportunities, along with increasing the residential densities and the variety of land uses you'll see actually on this slide here. So this is a draft future land use of just the urban growth area expansion. So this is north of Burns Road, north of the existing city limits and UGA. Yellow is the low-density residential, and I want to point out that there's still quite a bit of low-density residential, but keep in mind that this will also include in the future schools, parks, open space, public facilities, et cetera. And as we continue to dive deeper into our comprehensive plan and implementing the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, the goal would be to have more of a gentle density throughout all of our land uses, so that we're not stacking all of our higher-density residences in just one area of the city. The better way in planning is to distribute that equally throughout the entire city. You'll, so you'll see the different shades going from yellow to the orange to the lighter kind of peach color that identify medium density and also higher-density developments, and it may be hard to tell from here, but we tried our best to keep this on a organized grid pattern. That will be extremely important as we move forward with the city's growth, to identify and ensure that the development that is occurring, especially since it's 48,000 people, that's a lot of growth, that is happening in a way that our transportation system can adequately foster that development, provide efficient use of access, et cetera. The area you see in red is our commercial allocation, that is significantly increased than what was identified in alternative number two, and I'll go back to the jobs-to-household ratio. 75%, I think, according to the census in 2017, 75% of our work trips for people that live in Pasco actually leave Pasco. They leave Franklin County and work elsewhere. 26% of our work trips use Interstate 182 and enter into Richland and Benton County. And so the benefit of having more commercial and more space allocated for employment opportunities, obviously not only is a benefit to local residents, because it gives us an opportunity to live and work in Pasco, but also helps to facilitate more of a multimodal travel opportunity for folks, especially when you pair that with a refined transportation network. It begins to, you begin to shift your development pattern a little bit by having the adequate amenities for people either to work at or to find businesses, barbershops, restaurants, commercial activities, the things we all want to do, to have more of that allocated in Pasco before we shift our balance so far reliant on jobs that exist outside of Pasco, leaving us dependent on that. This is a little bit more of a proactive approach to make sure that there will be an opportunity if the market can support commercial development, we're actually have space for that to exist.
Mr. Gonzalez, this is a councilmember, Maloney. I have to have a quick question and comment. So if I understood correctly, this is going to be an item I'm going to ask questions about later down the, down the agenda. So what I think I understood you say is that if we have commercial development and more commercial development in areas such as what you have highlighted here, we're actually going to reduce the traffic counts going down on the 182 as we grow, or at least keep them closer to the same, so we're not seeing those massive backlogs of traffic at 68 and Road 100 entering the freeway and then, then of course, heading home in the evening. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
I wouldn't necessarily use the term reduce, I think mitigate potential congestion. If this wasn't planned for, for instance, if that commercial space wasn't available and ended up being located outside of Pasco or Franklin County, then people are going to be forced to leave Pasco, so they're going to use the, what's available today, the interstate system, Road 68, Broadmoor, 182, Highway 12, to go do their shopping and their business services elsewhere. What we hope this does is help to decrease the, I guess, the rapid pace of what that's looked like for Pasco. So how can we mitigate that by proper planning now, so that way in the future, when there is a need for commercial activity to take place in Pasco, it actually exists within our neighborhoods, on our identified corridors, rather than prior having it forced onto the, obviously, to the interstate? So I would use the term mitigate versus reduce.
Thank you, Joe. I was thinking of it in terms of relative terms, but thank you for clarifying and using accurate language there. And I'd just like to say that in addition, when I was part of the Somos-Pasco Steering Committee for the Economic Development Study for the greater Franklin County area, and that, one of the things that was really clear is that we are very much lacking a full range of business services in Pasco, and so I really appreciate the thought of, let's make sure that we are, we're creating the space for it, so that we can have the jobs here. Those business taxes are going to be huge in terms of both property taxes and else for, in terms of keeping our infrastructure viable. So thank you.
Yeah, and just because you mentioned Somos-Pasco, I do want to emphasize that that was identified clearly in the comprehensive plan. You'll see that as we come back through the summer with elements of the comp plan, but we did make sure to include all the work that went into the Somos-Pasco effort. That was a collaborative effort with the city, the port, and the county. So we did include what came out of those in terms of recommendations that fed right into the comp plan, but obviously the urban growth area as well. So thank you for mentioning that, Councilman Maloney. So again, this is what we see on the north end of the proposed Alternative Three of the UGA. This is on the industrial side, and you can see that we've included land that has been identified by the Port of Pasco for the Ryman Center. They envision that as kind of a heavy industrial activity center for them. This is located just north of the airport of the existing UGA. It does have access to Highway 395 and the BNSF railway, and they have indicated that it has a potential to have up to 1,000 jobs. So that is a significant benefit, we believe justifiable, in asking for that to be included in the UGA. And on the other, on the side on the right, you'll see, now, this is actually within the existing urban growth area, but we wanted to point this out. This happened recently, but obviously made quite a bit of news, and this was a large acquisition of land by the Confederate tribes of the Cobal Reservation, about 184 acres. This was land that was prior, that was previously identified as industrial. It's really early into that process to know what that would look like in the future, but this also helps us identify why we need more room for industrial capacity. Also, not all industrial development is equal, and Pasco, we have a heavy influence of logistics and manufacturing, so very large facilities, but smaller employment bases, and we wanted to take that into consideration when we move forward with an application of Franklin County, and it's reviewed by state agencies such as the Department of Commerce and anyone else, that we try to do our best in justifying that what we're asking for is reasonable. So this is a side-by-side comparison. On the left side, you'll see Alternative Number Two's future land use map. This was, again, identified in 2018. On the right side is Alternative Number Three, and I realize those maps are kind of hard to see behind the table, but I really wanted to focus here actually on the, on the numbers that are on Alternative Number Two and Number Three's table. You can see that Alternative Number Two had a heavy, had a heavy emphasis on low-density residential development, and so base math tells us that low-density development is going to require more land, more UGA expansion area. That has been decreased and then modified throughout the three residential land use categories that the city has. We've doubled the medium residential allocation, we've actually added high-density residential. We also, you can see the significant increase for commercial in Alternative Two. Granted, it was a larger expansion, but made up only 2% of the expansion area, and Number Three, that's been increased to 11%. The airport reserve remained the same, and then there was a slight increase as well with the industrial development allocation as well. And I think going back to the low-density, medium, and high-density residential, this has been an item that we discussed with the Planning Commission a few times and with council, actually, back when we came through with the approval to move forward with House Full 1923 funding, and that was allowing, or basically looking at different creative methodologies to increase residential development capacity in the city of Pasco, which would apply to the UGA as well. The Planning Commission recently heard a report from staff back in March about the way and the housing units in which the city of Pasco residents actually live in, and I looked at about 20 or so municipalities of slightly smaller to bigger than the city of Pasco, and we identified that Pasco had the second-highest number of residences living in single-detached units, which sounds like a great thing, but we also have the second-highest number of residences living in RVs and mobile homes. And so there's, when you dive deeper into the metrics behind our household income is just under $60,000, 17% under the poverty level, and 16% receive some form of SNAP government benefit, there may be a disconnect between that kind of housing that we're building versus what's actually necessary for those that live and work in Pasco, and we believe that this allocation itself is a much more appropriate forward, considering land use alternative than maybe what was provided in Alternative Number Two. So the capital facilities cost, this is a requirement by the GMA for us to take a planning level, a very high-level look at what, what can we expect to be the cost for the immediate six-year timeframe of your UGA area? So this isn't the cost for the entire UGA, it's a very high-level look at what would be the cost for relatively the first six years, or for us through 2025. This process began in 2019. Obviously, $114 million should stick out, variety of different funding sources, and I do want to emphasize that this majority of the land is privately owned, so the responsibility of a lot of this infrastructure will be borne by the developers. There's opportunities, obviously, for cities to contribute, but a lot of this will be borne by the development community. I know this is a pretty heavy topic, this slide in particular, so is there any questions or comments on this one in particular?
This is Councilmember Maloney. Mr. Gonzalez, can you at all try to help me understand how this compares to our current approved capital improvement plan that we've had in front of us?
Yes, absolutely. So the capital facilities plan for the UGA took at look, took a look and referenced the existing adopted capital improvement plan and the tip, along with all of the other comprehensive plans that have been adopted at the time that this was conducted, so water, sewer, and also a prior study that was done on Interstate 182 regarding the interstate system. The CFP for this did take those into consideration, but the idea is that this is a high-level look, and then the next CIP that comes through the city will take a more... Uh the CFP for this did take those into consideration, but the idea is that. This is a a high-level look, and then the next CIP that comes through the city will take a more refined look. At the cost to provide infrastructure to the expanded UGA area, and in particular, the ongoing sewer comprehensive plan amendment. And the transportation system master plan that is underway will provide a much more refined uh and detailed look. At what the expected cost should be, and those that are reasonable and and will that will that would then end up in the CIP.
Yeah, cause when I when I looked through this document, um I think I said, I think I saw it saying that even just for. Uh sewer and water, we were looking at um a substantial, it was in tens of millions of dollars more than our current um. Uh planning documents had, so I appreciate you um you clarifying that this is a probably conservative look, perhaps conservative look. And that there'll be some updates that will be forthcoming. But uh it it is a substantial dollar sign, and I wanted to make sure I understood how that compared to what we, like that what we've already seen and approved. Thank you.
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Go ahead, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, uh yeah, just a a a quick question on uh how these number numbers came about, uh. It it was based on a formula or uh how how are these projected?
I I I believe the direct numbers came from the existing plans. Uh and also, I I think it's it it's just the first six years, so it wouldn't be the entire UGA, but the formulas were based off of what was identified. In the already approved uh plans by the city of Pasco. A- as far as these, but I I can, if if necessary, I can come back for the next uh city council with a little bit more information. And take some notes if there's any specific questions on the formulas.
No, just just uh general curiosity.
So the next few slides, uh this is actually included as an attachment to the staff report, but this is a small snippet from the. Environmental impact state or the draft environmental impact statement, and what it does is compare the RCWs and the growth management act goals. That you'll see on the left column and come and addresses each alternative and whether uh the goals are met or not. Or or the what we can expect, and. Um I I I don't know if this should be much of a surprise, obviously, alternative number one was gonna have a lot of trouble meeting the housing accommodation, the employment demands. While existing parks um and services would have maintained, obviously, the. Uh it they would have been diluted, obviously, with increased population. Alternative number two um obviously does meet the housing accommodation, but it does so. With a less diverse housing uh profile. So it's it's what we've developed over the past twenty years, and as I mentioned uh earlier in the conversation. Uh we we should take a note and see if we're actually building and zoning for the land that's needed by the residents and workers of the city of Pasco. So while alternative two began to hit some of the goals of the of the GMA, um it really fell short. And and the whole uh goal of this exercise is for us to move forward with an application that has a. Reasonable chance of being approved by Franklin County. Alternative three, uh staff believes has it does a much better. Uh job at meeting the intent of the GMA goals at range from reducing sprawl to. Uh having an efficient transportation system, providing an adequate amount of housing for all income levels for the city of Pasco. Uh obviously, the economic development, you saw the added industrial space, the allocation of increased commercial areas. Um the retainment of open space and recreation will always be uh a necessa- a necessity for us to include in all of our long-range planning. Um and it also goes into the idea of agricultural, ag is very much a big component of. The economy in Franklin County, and the further we develop out into the UGA, the less of that we have. And so pointing back to a a point we made earlier in the in the discussion was preserving our urban growth area for. Urban levels of density, urban levels of service, that's the whole entire purpose of the UGA. And so while we do wanna maintain a variety of of lifestyle opportunities for the city of Pasco, that's extremely important to us. Some of these may not uh if uh some of the zoning patterns that may have made sense, you know, in nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty or two thousand. Uh may not make the best sense for us to move forward, and so the purpose of this discussion and then the comprehensive plan, obviously, that I hear about later this summer. Is to sort of begin a shift, a paradigm shift in the planning that is going on here in the city of Pasco. And so to to summarize this table, we staff believes that alternative number three offers the best. Uh the best opportunity for us to meet the GMA mandates, and with an approved urban growth area expansion application to Franklin County.
Mr. Gonzalez, eh this is Councilwoman Roach, may I make a comment about the GMO GMA goals and consideration to uh housing?
Yes.
I was just this past week on a panel discussion uh with some other city council members across Washington State about. Exactly this, the growth of of our cities and and how we're mitigating some of the the loss of land. Um and in particular, in our case, it's out in the the county, but I was wanting to know from. Alternative three, um I do recognize that, you know, we've done, that staff's done a a job of uh. You know, compact development and making it more efficient, and wondering if there is an opportunity to. Um go a little bit further on that with this alternative three, and knowing that we are. Butting up against an area that is our number one economic industry, which is farming. Um and wanting to know if there is an option to to be even more. Uh conservative with that land out there.
Y- yes, absolutely, and I think um obviously, this is the city's first attempt at conducting a land capacity analysis. Um this is a document that should be monitored and updated frequently, maybe on an annual or every two-year basis. And the reason for that would be to determine if we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Um if we have to come back in six years and ask for more UGA, that means that somewhere we we there was a disconnect. And so uh our goal at the planning department is to preserve as much of that UGA so that. We have enough room to accommodate all the growth through the year twenty thirty-eight. And the less of that UGA we have to use, the better off we are, because we won't have to continuously come back and ask for more and more land. Again, I think as everyone knows, the further north you go, you start running into ag and farm, and there's a concern with that and and rightfully so, so. Um obviously, there is an opportunity for us to decrease our impact to our existing and future urban growth area. And through the implementation of the comp plan is where a lot of that heavy lifting is going to come through. A series of code amendments that look at providing more flexible development standards, so that the development community has. Uh options to provide a variety of market housing um for residents that choose to live in the city of Pasco, and so that those interested in developing commercial. Uh parcels in the city have an option to do that as well, that's why we've allocated additional space in commercial areas. I I do think that we'd like to take a a approach at looking at what more infill and redevelopment looks like. Specifically on some of our travel quarters that can handle that capacity. Uh so that Pasco doesn't miss out on innovative uh on innovative developments that would go elsewhere, but we want those to be in Pasco as well. At least have an option for that to be in Pasco.
I really appreciate that thoughtful answer, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach, I have a question real quick, Jacob. Um so alternative three would be the most likely to get approved. Um but alternative two is, isn't that the direction? I mean, we, so you, what I just heard you say is that we want more land, so that we have room, um is that the direction we wanna go?
It just alternative two was the forty-hundred acre expansion, and and when that went through the county uh public planning process, and even here at the city of Pasco. There there were concerns that it was a uh a a forty-hundred acres is an extremely large urban growth area expansion by itself. Thirty-five hundred acres, and alternative three is extremely large expansion area. Um so the biggest concerns that came out of the alternative number two, this, I'm sorry, the alternative number two discussion were that. How do we justify that much land? If we were working on infill and redevelopment, we don't need that excess land. If we're working on meeting all of the goals of the Growth Management Act, we we should not have to rely on continuously expanding. Our urban growth area, there's a cost to that. Uh so the whole entire purpose of alternative number three, based off comment suggestions from Franklin County. The Department of Commerce, the Washington State Department of Transportation and Ecology, both had significant concerns about what the same development pattern would. Uh may maybe produce in terms of congestion congestion on the interstate system. Those were all taken into account for identifying a much more refined urban growth area, which what we see is in alternative number three. Uh staff does believe that alternative number three is a much more appropriate and responsible UGA expansion request. Uh but again, it is still very large, and the eventual I ideas for us to come back to the city council with a a a resolution. Identifying alternative three as a preferred option, uh so eh so be it on your decision.
Okay, and I got one more question, uh so depending on uh alternate alternative two or three. Water rights, I don't know if you could answer this, or maybe maybe Davey can help on this. Um what are the opportunities to get more access or for water rights? Uh depending on which which alternative we choose?
Well, it is uh, you know, council's aware. As we develop properties, in particular up in that area, uh that those properties have current water rights with them, and as part of development, they have to. Dedicate those water rights to the city.
Okay.
At least sufficient water rights for development itself. So right now, say there are four acre feet. Uh and I believe an urbanized subdivision needs about two acre feet, so they'd have they'd have to dedicate sufficient water rights. To meet the needs of the of the subdivision, I'm sure that I think that's what our code provides for. Or or development, I should say, yeah.
All right, thank you.
And then the other, I think the other point I wanted to make, if you overlaid the city limits map on this map and what you're. What you see above the above the um matrix that uh Jacob has up was the city limits map. Or you seen the urban growth area and the the expanded urban growth area, the the light pale yellow and the pink. So what that map doesn't have on it is the um. It doesn't have the city limits necessarily entirely, where you don't see the. Unincorporated islands, which are pretty significant in the River Haven area. And I would just, I would just mention that uh. This is a team effort, managing density and making sure we meet our density goals within the urban growth boundary. Is gonna require both us and Franklin County, who has land use jurisdiction over those unincorporated areas. Uh to require that of development. So while we need to do a good job of of stewarding and making sure we're getting the densities we need to get. We also need to count on Franklin County working with us in partnership to make that happen as well. Or else we will be pushing up into the, have to have to push up into those pink areas.
Uh thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, this is Councilwoman Roach, and I I don't mean to uh, you know. I guess let me take a step back, but. I I've been seeing this item on the Planning Commission since December two thousand and eighteen, and I. Uh you know, you you provided a table in the report and and counted how many times we saw it, which was like. Were fourteen times uh in front of the Planning Commission, and so. What I wanna say is that planning staff, when the first uh proposal of what this looked like. Uh was mostly single-family residents and just a little bit of commercial. And this proposal is, the UGA proposal is um come a long way since there, um a very long way, and. I think that first proposal would have done a tremendous amount of increase in the way of traffic and. And people are not really, you know, took into account as much as what I see now in alternative three with the. The increase of commercial and different densities of housing, and so I wanna acknowledge that. The alternat- the the option three looks uh greatly improved since. You know, what we saw back in two thousand and eighteen, and it it's it's great to see and great to hear you talk about. Um you know, exactly those sorts of uh those things of the impacts on uh on jobs and and traffic and. Uh other services like schools and parks, so thanks.
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Go ahead, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and um I guess I I more uh uh as a comment, I um I'm certainly. Aware of uh planning departments or uh different cities where they draft these plans, and they never come to fruition. Um what I'd like to attest to is in my district, which when I when I ran for city council. I described as um in some ways um a little bit forgotten, a little bit uh like the ugly stepchild. Um and I I I said that bec- I say that because there was a lot of land that nobody would touch. And I think uh since uh uh in the last few years, I've seen just such an amazing uh amount of interest. In um commercial, in residential, if you if you go through uh um. I I drove through Lewis Street uh east of Oregon, and just to see the the shops that are going up, the homes that are going up, the the land. Uh I I it was very heartening for me to just be able to uh see all the all the work that the planning com- uh commission, that the planning department have. Have put together to to see it come to fruition, and I I'm pretty confident that uh the the interest that that uh developers, that uh. People who are starting businesses have um in in even my my district is also would be shared in 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 the um. In in option three, so I it's I'm excited to see the future of Pasco.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Yeah, this is uh Councilmember Maloney, if I can talk real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um at the last uh planning commission meeting, I know that some of the developers were talking about, they wanted uh. The city to incorporate the area, I think it was north uh northwest, and there were some other concerns, so. We've been able to see what the planning commission came up with and uh work with the developers when we're talking about uh plan number three.
I'm sorry. Uh sorry, Councilman Redd, I didn't quite catch that last part, I I think you uh. Uh asked for a further reconsideration of alternative number three to include portions of these.
Yeah, I know that, you know, working with developers is extremely important, um I mean, they're the ones that are gonna be putting this all together. And they had talked about their concerns when I watched the the planning commission meeting, they talked about their concerns about there was a development that wasn't in there. They had some other concerns about uh properties that did not wanna sell, but they would be in the urban growth area. Have you had a chance to work with the planning commission and and the different developers and come up with? Uh you know, a a working plan on this, I I just hate to leave out uh key members of our community um when doing this uh plan.
Uh yes, absolutely, and uh again, to reiterate, the the entire purpose of alternative number three was to take. Unnecessary uh land out of the proposed expansion request, so. Uh that the land capacity analysis wasn't conducted for alternative number two, so it was assumed that. The majority of the growth would take place outside of the existing urban growth area, so with that approach. Uh you, it's easy to identify why uh the forty-hundred acres was incorporated into an expansion request, however. Our responsibility is for the Growth Management Act, that's what we're responsible to maintain the the goals and and the policies enacted by the RCWs of the state of Washington. And good planning dictates that we are extremely careful with expanding into areas that are not urban. Areas that are urban should be uh built up to urban levels, areas that are not should remain as they are today. Um it's something I mentioned earlier, but if we are successful with revitalizing our downtown with increased commercial activity and added housing. If we are able to develop and do infill uh housing. Uh for a variety of of housing styles within the existing city limits and UGA, that in itself takes away. The necessity to continue to expand outwards and provide the services for that, I think one thing that. Um no, I mentioned it earlier, but the idea that growth pays for growth, uh there's a met, there's a asterisk to that, because we still need to maintain what's left over. We still need to operate that on a yearly or annual uh it in every five, ten years, whatever the lifespan of these infrastructure improvements are. The city and the ratepayers are responsible for that, so for us to expand just because land may seem. Uh prime for development today, we need to be looking at it with a twenty to thirty-year approach. And identify, can we justify forty-hundred acres, and what alternative number three identified was no.
Okay, I appreciate that answer, uh my main point was just that I, on number three, that we work with the developers and make sure that we're not missing any details. To make sure that this is the the best plan, I mean, I like number three the best myself, I just wanna make sure that we, the city works with developers to make sure that. Certain areas are not left out and and that uh we do a home run on this, so that's my main point, thank you.
Let me ask you in a different way is, I I think uh total acreage is where your calculations lie. In the actual uh site or the the location of that acreage, outside of being. Uh, proximate to the city, to where it makes sense from a utility and transportation corridor standpoint. Uh, doesn't really matter a whole lot, so if you were to do something in terms of adjusting that boundary. Uh, to the areas suggested by folks at the at the public hearing uh, in front of the planning commission recently. You'd probably have to give up acreage in another area to to kinda remain with the same net acreage.
That's correct.
Okay, and I I think that's, I think that's what the council member was was getting at, so.
Alright, anybody else with any other questions or comments? So this will uh, will this come to uh, be on the agenda next week, or?
Actually, uh, this item's gonna be uh, for consideration by the planning commission on the eighteenth of June. And depending on the uh, result of that discussion. Uh, we'd like to come back on the twenty second of June with a draft resol- uh, with the resolution for city council to consider of approval. With that, uh, with a successful resolution, we would then uh, finalize our application to Franklin County for. The official expansion request, and again, at that, uh, through that forum. Members of the community uh, or the development uh, industry also have an opportunity to comment at Franklin County's forums as well.
Well, thank you for the report, uh, and the information, Mister Jacob Gonzalez, and uh, appreciate all the work that's gone into this and. Um, if there's no further questions or comments. Perfect, thank you very much. Alright, next we'll go to uh, next item, and that's the six-year transportation improvement plan. Mister White, you wanna make the introduction?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and um, approaching the podium is Dan Ford, our city engineer. Uh, you've heard the transportation improvement program, uh, mentioned several time in Mister Gonzalez's um. Presentation over the last few minutes, and Mister Ford will uh, brief council on the particulars of this plan. Uh, uh, and maybe start off first by describing what its purpose is. As compared to some of the other plans the city prepares and uses.
Yes, uh, Mister White, thank you very much, um, Council, uh, happy to be in front of you again, it's been a while.
There you go, alright. Uh, thank you very much, Mister White, and uh, Council, it's good to be in front of you again, it's been quite some time. Uh, six-year transportation plan, we will start off as uh, Mister White suggested. And let you know that this is is truly a planning document. This is not a fiscally constrained document similar to the CIP that you're used to. Uh, and this does not necessarily take into account uh, personnel resources enabled to deliver. Uh, these projects as well, what we try to. Uh, make sure that we accomplish with this plan is to include all of the transportation projects that we foresee. Uh, in the in the six-year horizon. Uh, it's really important that all of our transportation uh, projects appear in this plan. Especially if we're gonna look for funding in the future, uh, this plan is 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 critical for that purpose. Um, I'll I'll get right into the presentation. And we will talk a little bit about this particular uh, TIP. This is a transitional uh, transportation improvement plan. The reason for that is is all the plans that we have been talking about. Uh, and and where we are with those plans, for example, the transportation system master plan that Jacob spoke about. That is underway currently and is anticipated to be done uh, next spring. Uh, the local road safety plan that was just recently uh, completed. Has actually produced a couple of projects that will appear in this TIP. And we'll talk about those as well, so a real exciting time. But for the most part, uh, not a a great number of changes. Uh, there are three projects that we'll talk about that will be completed by the end of this year. Uh, and nine projects that we've added uh, in a di- for this new plan from last year as well. Um, we will also talk a little bit, although not a great deal, about some of our our projects that. Are obvious uh, of interest, Road sixty-eight is is one that uh, the completed projects will talk about. Um, and those are on your screen right now, those completed projects are Chapel Hill Boulevard. Um. Road eighty-four to Road sixty-eight, Road sixty-eight burden, uh, road signage and striping plan. The Wrigley Drive extension, uh, Clemente Lane to Road sixty-eight Place. Those last two specifically are intended to make improvements in and around the interchange. Uh, at Road sixty-eight, you'll see some some uh, good improvements from those. And of course, the Chapel Hill Boulevard project was an LID that was done not too long ago, that that uh, is just south of the interchange as well. So the the new projects. That I spoke about, we'll walk down through these, the first two projects, South Tenth Avenue and West Lewis Street. Advanced Intersection Warning and the Sylvester Street Safety Program Improvements Projects. Those are both identified in the uh, local programs' safety plan that I spoke about earlier. The Sacagawea Road Pedestrian Bicycle Pathway, uh, we'll talk about that and its location, that one. Uh, will be out along the Sacagawea Road and it will tie SR twelve's. Wash Dot uh, Park and Ride in with the Sacagawea Park. Uh, Court Street Traffic Revisions, again, this project will look at uh, possible. Improvements to the striping and uh, intersection control and whatnot along Court Street. Uh, it'll also look at efficiencies associated with uh, bicycle and pedestrian as well. Uh, again, some of those complete street considerations that we've talked about in the past. We're actually moving those forward so that we can try to make those improvements uh, in some of our busier corridors. Uh, Harris Road Realignment. This is one that was brought up on the feasibility, the one eighty-two feasibility study. And this was specifically, at that time, talked about as an on-ramp. And and possibly moving is associated with that on-ramp to one eighty-two. There'll also be some considerations for this as far as the Adams Property Development and the Broadmoor Area Development. And how that is realigned to tie into Sandifer, so just wanna make sure that we're all clear on that. North Road Forty East Pathway, uh, this works pretty well with the Sacagawea uh. Bike ped pathway in the fact that we, this would provide a route then to go from. Sacagawea Park up to uh, Terravita and the uh, pathway that's on the south side of the road up there. So again, looking at trying to interconnect those bike and pedestrian pathways. Uh, North Road One Hundred Pedestrian Bicycle Improvements. Uh, trying again to focus on Road One Hundred and the improvements associated with Road One Hundred. And knowing that Road One Hundred will will again become one of our busier corridors. Uh, as improvement and development uh, occurs there. We're trying to make sure that we've got uh, bike and ped improvements considered there as well. North Road Ninety-three, we'll talk a little bit about that one, I did add some slides to this presentation to try to clarify that. Uh, Power Line Pathway, it was a little bit confusing even for me, who knows where this is because I'm the guy that came up with this. But uh, trying to uh, provide some uh, pathways for pedestrians to get up to Burns Road. Especially considering the new schools that we've got up on Burns Road, up around Road Ninety and Road Ninety-three in that area. And then the Argent Road curb gutter and sidewalk improvements, this would be from approximately Road Seventy-six over to Road sixty-eight. In conjunction with Chihuahua High School and and looking to provide some some sidewalk and some uh, uh, improvements there. So again, kinda focus on these, I I won't go through all of them, these are just the new ones that I I actually just spoke about. But trying to give you an idea where these are located. Again, the Harris Road Realignment, what we've highlighted here is not the proposed. A location for the realignment, but the existing road as it as it occurs now. Road One Hundred Pedestrian Bicycle uh, improvements. We'll talk a little bit more about those as I created a new slide, but those are just north of the interchange. Uh, North Road Ninety-three and Power Line Pathway, I'll try to help with that as well, you can see it's approximate location there is. Number thirty-five and the Argent Road curb gutter and sidewalk improvements. Again, along Argent Road in conjunction with Chihuahua High School. And I tried to provide a little clarity, mostly because of the North Road Ninety-three Power Line Pathway. And as I did so, I knew today that it would probably be even a little more difficult, no matter what I did. But if uh, you were to take a look, and if you knew the road names in that particular area. Uh, between Coventry Lane and Ballmore Court, uh, is a power line easement that runs north and south. And uh, what we're proposing here is the possibility of providing a bicycle ped pathway. That would provide another access uh, up to Burns Road. Currently, what's what's proposed in conjunction with the schools and crossing of Burns Road is a crossing at Road Ninety. And so this would provide another location a little bit farther to the west. To bring pedestrians up through the residential area and get them onto that pathway. Uh, and and then take them down to Road Ninety for that crossing. So again, just trying to provide a little bit of clarity here, I'm not sure I did that, but that was the intent. Uh, South Tenth Avenue and West Lewis Street Advanced Intersection Warning, and then Sylvester Street Safety Improvement. Program or Safety Program Improvements, these are both identified in the local program's safety plan. Uh, and that uh, the South Tenth Avenue, uh, one is the intersection, obviously, at Lewis and Tenth. Right there in front of uh, uh, the marketplace. And then Court Street uh, Traffic Revisions, we talked about that a bit as well. And just tried to keep the theme going and provide a little bit of clarification, but some of these projects are pretty lengthy. So I just zoomed in to try to provide a little clarity. And then, uh, a couple of the pathways that we talked about, we'll talk a little bit more about Sacagawea Road uh, Pedestrian Bicycle Pathway. The city, I've been working with Wash Dot on this particular one. We, the city will, although we've shown dollar amounts in the tip. Uh, the city will not have any financial participation in this project. We are utilizing toll credits that quite honestly, I wasn't even aware of until this came about. Uh, and um, in fact, Wash Dot has asked us not to provide any additional funding for this. What this is at this point is would be a widened shoulder along Sacagawea Road. That that would take us out to the uh, Wash Dot Park and Ride. And then this would connect into other uh, ba- pathways that that Wash Dot currently has across the Snake River and the Bridge and whatnot. Uh, the opportunity for the city, obviously, is to be able to have an extension of our bike and ped pathways. At uh, really no financial involvement, but what we will have, and one of the reasons why I wanted to make sure it was on this plan is. Ultimately, the city will be responsible for uh, maintenance and operation of this pathways like we are many of our others. So that's something to keep in mind as we move forward. The other uh, proposed project would be number thirty-three there, which is the uh, North Road Forty. Uh, East Pathway, again, trying to connect Sacagawea uh, and the Trailer Park down at that location. North to approximately the Terravita uh, development, and there is a pathway on the south side of that road as well, so I think this would be. A very important uh, pathway as far as connectivity goes, we do get a number of calls from the Lakeview Trailer Park area. Looking for how, you know, how can I safely get into town, uh, you know, there's really no connection. Uh, to get me up to the pathway at that point, so that was where this stemmed from. And again, trying to provide a little bit of clarity, just from a uh, Google Earth perspective. And then we can get into the details and answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you, thank you, Dan, uh, anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to pro- bring up?
Yeah, this is Councilman Serrano, Mister Ford, I had a couple of quick questions. Um, you showed the improvements on, I think, Road Ninety-three to get to the new schools that are being built up there off Burns Road. Um, as far as crossing from south of Sandifer. Uh, for those students, is the intent, they would walk up to Road Eighty-four and use the existing crosswalk, which is. You know, up near the park in My Angeles School, or do you foresee the need or or intent to build another or place another crossing? Um, maybe over by the Broadmore Mall, or or what's what's your thought there, has that been considered? Um, and then kind of a second component to that question is the bike and uh, ped facilities on. Uh, Road One Hundred, I assume that's the south side of Road One Hundred that would be built built out? Um, so if you could answer those two, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, let me start with the last one first, the bike and ped uh, on the uh, it's actually on the north side, there is some existing. Uh, bike and ped uh, facility there that is pulled away from Road One Hundred. And due to the trees and whatnot in that location, that pathway is in pretty poor condition. So one of the efforts that we're trying to do is keep pushing uh, this connectivity. And how important this is, Road One Hundred area, uh, again, how important this is, and. Uh, it will just be north, just south of Sandifer, and I think the limits are probably better shown. On the uh, the uh, um, listing that you have, uh, that was provided with the packet as well, other than the presentation materials. Again, the presentation materials are a little hard to see at the scale that they are, but. But those improvements are specifically north of the um, north of the interchange at that point. The other question, uh, and I, maybe I'm not following, so uh. Was that specific to Sandifer, or was that up at Burns, as far as the pathways?
So obviously, the pathway is drawn at Burns, but for students that are coming from Sandifer. That may have been zoned for the new schools, uh, in particular, the middle school. I would say that their option would be to go up Road Eighty-four at the flashing light crossed, which is up near My Angeles. And then come up Burns presumably, and then cross uh, into Ninety-three, or or would there be one? You know, closer to the Broadmore Mall or anything of that nature? Um, I I'm just kinda trying to figure out the walking path for these students that are crossing over Sandifer.
Yeah, unfortunately, right now, there aren't a lot of connection points. For whatever reason, um, the way development occurred along the south side of Burns. Uh, that was one of the reasons why we tried to take advantage of this particular location. Uh, if you actually take a look, uh, there there are, there are very few connecting roads. That connect up to up up to Burns, uh, Road Eighty-four being one, Road Ninety being another. Um, and then from Road Ninety, it takes a huge leap all the way to Road One Hundred. Uh, so we will continue to try to provide access points, you know, along the south side of Burns wherever we can. And we'll continue to look at pathways and their connectivity, but but for right now, we're somewhat limited. Based upon just the the allowable access points that we we currently have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Ford, can I ask on uh, the Argent Road Improvement?
Sure.
On the phase one, uh, there's phase two and three, or actually, phase one, three and two, uh, but it does include a light there on Road Thirty-six, is that correct?
Yeah, it originally included a light at Road Thirty-six, but I know, and we got FAA approval for a signal. But the intent was to go back and look at that intersection to see if a signal was really the best option. That is a, that is a three-legged intersection, uh, and oftentimes, those are better handled by a roundabout than they are by a signal. Uh, one of the, is, so that that is one of the things that's being looked at. The original project was in its entirety from Road Thirty-six all the way to Road uh, to Twentieth. Uh, and it had been broken up based upon funding opportunities and working with CBC in the port. So now it is phase one, which is Twentieth to Saraceno, phase two, uh, which I believe is uh, the intersection itself. Which was a high priority for council last year, I know that was in case, uh, the fact, and then um. I know that uh, Director Worley had gotten funding through STP for uh, the third phase, which is a connect. Connection between Road Thirty-six and Saraceno. So I think that project is 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 fully funded moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Any other questions or comments for Mister Ford?
If not, Councilmember Valoni, I I do have a couple of questions. Um, uh, Mister Ford, I think you've you've seen these uh, these before, so uh, thank you for your your uh, your response uh, via email. Um, one of the things I I guess I I I wanna be specific and clear on asking is, when I was reading through the urban growth area expansion. Uh, there was a table five in the capital facilities analysis that started talking about Road One Hundred and sort of what some of the peak. Um, hour traffic delays may be um, along that road within the next six years. And during peak hours, I saw that there was a degradation estimate of up to a level E. So we're talking about something much more similar to Road 68 at its peak hours, if I understand that correctly. I know my, I'll speak only for myself, but I know I've heard other council members say the same thing. Our intention is not to have that sort of backup on Road 100 that we've seen on Road 68. Can you speak at all to what we're going to be able to do about that? Or I just didn't really see a lot of projects necessarily that on this plan that were going to help alleviate that traffic as we continue to build out the Broadmore area and into this out north?
Sure, absolutely. And I, again, appreciate the opportunity to chat with you and answer some of these questions in more detail. And I probably should have added this to begin with because, again, the email that I sent today did suggest more focus on Road 100. And I do want to make council aware that one of the things that council passed last year that I think was very important was the construction standards for private development. Within that is the discussion of TIA's or Transportation Impact Analysis. Keep in mind that we will continue to conduct those analyses for each and every development that occurs in this area as well as other areas of Pasco. But obviously, those are very critical as we look forward to what is going to become Road 100. And then we have been continually working with WashDOT as well, and they will be involved in those TIA's moving forward. So one of the issues that I think you're concerned with is the backup of transportation possibly as it enters or wants to enter onto 182. And if you'll remember back to the feasibility study that I know that we've talked about a couple of times this evening, there was actually discussion, also the Harris Road Alignment or the possible realignment of that was in consideration of some on-ramp improvements. I know that I've been working pretty rigorously with WashDOT on not only overpass improvements at Road 100 for pedestrians and bikes, which again, I'm bouncing all over the place a little bit, but they are also looking at changes to that interchange. And they understand that it is currently or it's already not functioning at the level that it should. And so improvements to that interchange, I think, will greatly improve access and the patterns, the transportation patterns that even Mr. Gonzalez talked about when he talked about the urban expansion. The transportation improvement analysis are really important, and we will continue to look at these individually as well as overall in context with other developments in the area. And they will actually give us guidelines as to the improvements and the impacts associated with private development that will be made in conjunction with those developments going in. So it's not a trying to address the problem after the fact. We're going to try to make sure that we continue to work with the problem as development comes in.
Mr. Ford, I appreciate that answer. And I know you're thinking about these things, so I don't think anything from my question is suggesting that you're not well aware of how essential it is to get Road 100, especially at the 182 intersection, on-ramps and off-ramps correct. I guess I'm just, when I'm looking at a six-year projection that's provided to us in the very, in the previous agenda item, and we're seeing, again, we're seeing suggestions that we might be degrading traffic service there and wait times beyond what our target goal is. You can see where my concern is coming from. So if there's anything that we need to do as a council to help ensure that the state is looking at and is adequately addressing our transportation needs at Road 100 and Broadmore, that area there, perhaps legislative lobbying, if this needs to be one of our legislative agenda items for us to go talk to in Olympia. I know I would personally be more than happy to send myself off to talk to anyone who would listen, but this is essential to get right before these additional 50,000 people move into town over the next 20 years.
No, that's very good and very appropriate. I do think that anything that can be done, any kind of focus brought to this area, obviously, as improvement continues. And I know the Planning Department, the CD Department itself, has seen a great number of preliminary plots already submitted for these areas, especially up around Burns and Road 100 area itself. So anything that can be done, you know, we'll continue to push from our seat. But yeah, I encourage any emphasis brought to this area would be very helpful.
Great. And my last, I'll just make one last comment is I really appreciate the focus on that multimodal transportation. I know that our last round with this, that was something that I think we emphasized strongly as a council was that we really want to see safe access for our kids going to school and others that aren't able to drive a car or can't or don't want to drive a car to be able to get from point A to point B. And I see that that's really reflected here. I just want to extend my personal gratitude for listening to kind of what council's looking for and the sort of direction we're looking at and really implementing it into this plan. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Well, it sounds like, any other comments before I move forward?
This is Councilwoman Roach. I do actually have a couple of comments and one question. Thank you, Mr. Ford, for your presentation. I really appreciate it. I was wondering if the survey that was taken, what was the engagement like from the public? And what was incorporated from that survey from the public into this plan?
Yeah, you know, as I mentioned, and I haven't gotten today's updates, but I know that Jacob follows that very closely. We had, as of the end of last week, more than 205 participants in the survey so far. So we're getting a lot of participation with that. The information from that survey unfortunately is not available. We've got to have this done here soon. But we will see the impact of that survey data on the Transportation System Master Plan. And again, if I didn't state it clearly, the local road safety plan is, you know, is already produced a couple of projects, and the Transportation System Master Plan will really wrap, you know, put a bow on this as far as identifying and ensuring that our transportation is a priority and our projects are identified. And I think that's really critical. So we're looking forward to the data coming in from those surveys to impact the projects that are selected from the Transportation System Master Plan.
Thank you. I appreciate that information. The couple of comments that I had, the first is one that I'm just going to continue to be the squeaky wheel on. I think it's one that needs attention and has needed attention for more than a decade. And that is that the folks that live in East Pasco off of A Street that use Highway 12 and enter on Highway 12 headed west, that's a really dangerous entrance point. And I know we've had this, not just you and I, but just council and planning commissions have had this conversation many times. But the concern is that, you know, even if we don't have the funding at this point to do an overpass to make it a more safe on-ramp onto the highway for those heading west, in the meantime, can there be something put into place so that those folks who are traveling in that direction could maybe use the Heritage Boulevard overpass now that that is used? Because we know that there's been a lot of near fatalities and even fatalities at that entrance point. And so that's the one thing. The other is, for two years, I canvassed all around Pasco. And if I had a dollar for every time someone in the Burton Boulevard corridor told me that they had a fender bender and that traffic was excessive at high peak times or that they wanted to see more crosswalk lighting, I feel like that's an area of great need. And one of the things that I think is easy to do is there's not, there is a crosswalk somewhere around Geese Stadium area going north and south on Burton Boulevard, but it's not well lit. And because traffic goes faster on that road, I've heard the request that if we could do what we did on Sandifer Boulevard at Road 84, which is have that flashing light crosswalk, that would be helpful. We know there's Franklin Stem and Marie Curie and McGee Elementary, where I went to school there. There's a lot of families, a lot of pedestrians and children cycling. And I think that would be an easy, not that high-cost area to make a fix there. So those are my two inputs. Thanks for considering it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Anybody else? If not, Mr. Ford, thank you very much. I believe it'll be coming for a hearing next week.
Next week.
And looking forward for that. So thank you very much for the report.
Great.
And continue the great work. Thank you.
All right.
All right, moving to the next item. We'll go to Item C, PMC Update to Street Overlay and Real Estate Excise Tax. I missed a signal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The item in front of you is related to some changes to our PMC. A more significant change is relating to the city's overlay fund. And currently, the scope of the fund allows for overlay work on our existing city streets. And from our experience with Oregon Avenue and what our experience will be with Lewis Street, what we've found is that we need to clarify and update the scope of where the use of the funds of this overlay, street overlay fund can be used. And essentially, when, how we have funded Oregon Avenue, which the council and the city would have overlaid if we had not done the whole Oregon Street Improvement Project. We had to do a lot of estimating and a lot of, not, I wouldn't call it guesswork, but definitely a lot of estimating and coming with backup so that we can justify the use of the overlay fund. And similarly, with Lewis Street, the fact that you're doing a whole-scale overpass and doing a lot of more improvements rather than just the overlay, the city would have done an overlay on that street regardless. So the use of the extra level of hoops that the city is having to go through to justify the use of this funds, it's not that we cannot do it, and we definitely have done that with Oregon Avenue, but it just opens us up to more scrutiny and additionally, more work to justify the use of the funds. So what the staff is recommending is that we add an additional scope to the current PMC that essentially allows for the funds to be used as matching funds for any other street project. And for street projects like Argent Road or Oregon Avenue that is completed or Lewis Street, some major, major street projects where overlay work would also be completed. The second part of it is a really minor change, but definitely to understand city's finances and be a little bit more, not transparent, but more aware of how we're utilizing, how we're naming our funds so that it's easier for people to understand what is going on within the city. We currently have a capital improvement fund, and that fund essentially collects all of the taxes from real estate excise taxes. And we also have another capital fund, which is essentially where we do construction of major capital projects. So those two things, though, to finance staff and to many city staff, is two distinct projects, and we've gotten used to what exactly they mean. To a layperson reading city's financial statements, might not be clear on exactly what a capital improvement fund is and then why there is a need for another construction fund. So we're recommending that we change the name of the capital improvement fund to Real Estate Excise Tax Fund, just to add to the clarity. With that, if you have any questions?
Any comments by any of the council members? I think it sounds like a good idea. I think we can move forward.
Right, we will come back to you with a resolution.
Perfect, thank you. All right, thank you for that report. Go to Item D, Financial Update. You're up again.
It's me again, Mr. Mayor and Council. As we go through the COVID-19 emergency, we not only have a health issue and a crisis, but also an economic crisis on our hands. And I'm sure you have heard from many national and even local news about the impact, not just to the businesses and the individuals due to this crisis, but also to the local government. And in fact, in terms of impact to the governments and different layers of governments, local governments are going to be the most impacted by the crisis just by the virtue of how they're structured and the pressure points for local governments to provide services, but also some of the revenues that they depend upon, like sales tax, that are very subjective to the economy. So overall today, we will, you can stop and ask me any questions you'd like throughout the presentation. But the overview would be the revenue loss that we're anticipating. And this is, I'm an accountant, so it's always the worst-case scenario for me. But I've tried my best to be as realistic as I possibly can. The grants that we have received so far, and we're also anticipating to receive, and expenses that were not budgeted and are above and beyond what our regular expenses might have been. Also, expenses that are, that were budgeted but not for this purpose. So essentially, we kind of are calling it reallocated labor. Like, for example, we have a continuity of operations planning group, and we have spent a lot of hours ensuring that we are prepared for this emergency. And the hours that we are collecting that is worked there is most of the time reallocated labor. So it's not above and beyond. Me as a finance director might have worked on other actions, but now I'm working on COOP. So it's still an expense, COOP, or sorry, COVID-related expense, but not an expense that is above and beyond. The third part is new federal mandates. We had, through CARES Act from Congress, there were two weeks of emergency sick leave that were federal mandates where local governments were exempted from receiving reimbursement. So essentially, we have to provide that to our staff, but we do not get reimbursement like some of the other businesses do. So that is a new expense for us that is not budgeted and something that we have to be very mindful of. General fund is going to be the most impacted. And before I go into the gloom and doom, let me just say that we have very healthy general fund reserves. Council has worked diligently over the last five, six years, I would say. That's when it's really started to go up to ensure that we are saving money for rainy day like now, but also big capital projects like the police station, fire station, future community center, things like that. And so it's, we do have savings. However, once you use the savings, it's gone, and it's really hard to build that up. Overall, for general fund revenue, we're anticipating about a $2 million reduction in sales tax. And there's some caveats to this. Almost about 40% of our sales tax comes from vehicle and machinery and equipment, sales and services in that kind of section of economy. So if those areas are doing well, we might do better than what I'm anticipating. And similarly, construction is not slowing down. So 18% of our sales tax comes from construction-related activity. So we're anticipating about 10% to 15% decline for the remainder of the year since March forward. And we're not seeing any decrease in construction activity and also vehicle sales. Uh and we're not seeing any decrease in construction activity and also vehicle sales. But again, um we have to see full data to ensure that that is truly happening in uh in the local economy. Uh gaming taxes, um we're anticipating almost no additional revenue for the remainder of the year. Um essentially, um the revenue coming in are um card games, taxes. Uh casinos being closed, uh less people going to casinos when they are open. Uh will impact this revenue pretty significantly. Um school resource officers, we get um funding from Pasco School District. We have five. Uh FTEs on that, and a hundred and fifty K is something that we've lost so far. And of course, additional revenue loss will depend on how school districts come back during the fall session. But we're also receiving grants, so local cares, um two point two five eight million dollars. And Department of Justice has also funded our um police department with forty, forty-three thousand. Uh we're in fact, in the process of uh completing the application on it. And as we discussed last week, uh we're many times getting the allocation and then we're getting into the application stage, which is. Um kind of the opposite um process, and then assistance for firefighters. With FEMA, we've had many conversations with uh FEMA representatives, and of course, they are under immense pressure as well. Um uh the whole country is in an emergency mode. Um so we're anticipating very little assistance from FEMA at this point. And um two hundred K would be um would be a pleasant surprise to get. Uh for general fund, uh direct expenses, um again, we have categorized it to what we talked about in the expenses. Um labor, uh labor, non-labor and federal leave. And so far, about four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, we're anticipating by the end of the year to get to about one point seven. And this is just on general fund. And um with labor, we're anticipating that we're not going to spend as much time there, but there still will be continued effort. Um to combat COVID. A non-labor, um we anticipate a lot more non-labor cost. To get people back to work and purchasing um items to ensure that. Uh our staff safety and our customer's safety and our residents' safety um is um thought about. And um and there's, there's a lot of planning that Mr. Ratkai is doing with um his facilities group. And the federal leave, um you'll see this fifteen K that we have incurred so far. And five hundred and seventy-one K that is um quite high. And the reason for that is that with federal leave, we do not have any trending. Um those are staff that uh have been um qualified for federal leave and left. So essentially, what we've done is assumed that about fifty percent of our staff by the end of December. Will qualify for that federal leave and that they will take it. And that would be the co- the five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in cost um in general fund for that federal leave. We, we talked about kind of the reallocation of the labor. So even though um we are saying seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in general fund will be expended combating COVID. Only about two hundred and twenty-five or two hundred and seventy-five of that, we anticipate to be above and beyond. Um so five hundred K of that, we, I think can be reallocated, um uh or is reallocated labor. And um those, all hundred, uh seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of the direct labor expenses. Would be eligible for reimbursement under Local Cares Act, um just as a, as a point of reference. General fund, of course, is free to give money to other funds, and so this is where kind of our subsidies comes in. Street fund has always had a very little um fund balance. And uh with COVID and people driving less, we're anticipating. Uh that the motor vehicle fuel taxes will not be um as much either. And so we anticipate somewhere between half a million to six hundred thousand dollars. Um to be given out in subsidies for the street fund. Um arterial fund has fund balance, but of course, a lot of the arterial fund is allocated to go out to Lewis Street. Um for uh constructions, so that might be something that might be upcoming in the next couple of years. Um ambulance is um doing fairly well, and part of that is because we're getting some. Um subsidy from different uh agencies, and part of that is. Uh getting a higher transport rate on Medicare and Medicaid patients, which has helped a lot. Because we have a lot, large percentage of Medicare and Medicaid patients. Um and Happo Center Stadium, uh both um have enough fund balance. To get us through twenty twenty and maybe even twenty twenty-one. Um however, it really depends on um how long this crisis lasts and how the economy comes back. Um and of course, any other economic development support that the council uh chooses to give would be coming out of general fund. Any questions so far as I move on to other funds?
Any questions, Council? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So uh we talked about the street fund and arterial fund, both due to uh reduction in the motor vehicle fuel taxes. And arterial fund is something that we will not need to act on right away, but it's definitely something that I want to. Uh put in front of you for the next couple of years. Uh and um ambulance fund, uh there, there's going to be expenses that are going to be above, above and beyond. But we're also anticipating that the revenues are going to be above and beyond. Um and golf fund is, is doing okay so far, um surprisingly, so. Um uh but we're still anticipating the loss of rent revenue, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And then any other revenue shortfall uh that might come up by the end of the year. Hotel motel tax, um we're, we're anticipating um about, oh, close to half a million dollars here. It funds the Giza Stadium, um and um with a subsidy, the track. And uh sorry, the Happo Center, and then also the Tri-Cities Visitor and Convention Bureau, Pasco Chamber of Commerce. Um Historic Society, uh a lot of other agencies that the lodging taxes, but Advisory Committee makes recommendation to the council. And council uh reviews and approves them. Uh there is a good fund balance, as I mentioned, between track and Happo, so that should be able to sustain us. Uh but definitely, some of the impacts that I want to highlight here with that loss of revenue, um and uh what to look. Look forward to. Um the looking forward to is not the right terminology there. Uh and. Lodging tax, um essentially, this is a pass-through to but um visit Tri-Cities. Excuse me. And there is no fund balance. And um it really depends on what the council decides on. Excuse me. Um and um but this is definitely something that um. If this is Tri-Cities does not have enough funding or reserves, that might be an issue. So overall, this is a summary of all of the funds that you have. And and the impact of COVID, uh all of the major funds and their impact on COVID. And um overall, we're looking at about four point six million dollars. But my hope is that um economy will. My hope is that economy will um do much better and um. And the jobs report is a perfect example of it. Um there's very, very smart minds on, out there. That had assumed that the job report from, the last job report was going to be much worse than what it turned out to be. Um S and P is back to its twenty twenty, you know, early twenty twenty levels. So this is such an unprecedented crisis and a global one. Uh that it is hard to figure out exactly where we will land. So I could confidently tell you that four point six million dollars is the worst that you're looking at. Um for twenty twenty, and uh with twenty twenty-one with, with more information. Um hopefully, uh the economy will come back and will be, will be fine. But otherwise, um your, your agenda report also has the fund balances for, for all of the funds listed. Uh and especially general fund, um is, is doing, doing very well. And and you've been saving all of this money for, for the rainy day and, and this is it. That is, that is all I have.
Alright, well, thank you very much. And uh Ms. Sigdell, I, I realize that um, you know, in your position, you're the bearer of bad news and, and. And come out with the, you know, this is a, a, a more conservative figures because, you know, you don't have the crystal ball. And if you did, you probably wouldn't be working here. But um, but no, appreciate the work and effort you've put into this. You know, it, 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 it brings me somewhat comfort knowing that uh because of. Um our administration and, and the management of what we have. You know, it seems like we, we may be able to manage, uh even though we may get to this point. But it does take a lot of work to get to that point, and we gotta continue to be frugal and, and do the things we need to do to. To maintain uh the quality of life for our citizens and, and do what's right. And, and it's just gonna take extra work to prioritize and, and get back to where, you know, in the event that we need to. Use uh some of our funds that, that we give back to, to this state so that we can be in good standing and, and in a safe place again. Uh so thank you very much for this. Any, any council members have any comments they'd like to share or questions that they have from Ms. Sigdell?
Yeah, this is Serrano. Can you speak to what we have, and I apologize if I miss this, in the rainy day fund? Just so we get a sense of where we would sit and if potentially you have some sort of. How long it took to get us there, um or, or some type of graduated, you know, X hundred thousand per year is what we're. Adding to it or whatever the number is, if you could speak to that briefly, thank you.
Uh yes, we, we do have fund balances, which are, which are usually our, our rainy day funds. Um throughout different funds. And uh the major one is uh our general fund, and we have two point three million dollars in that fund right now. Uh I'm looking at my Excel sheet and uh we started, if I remember. We started with nine point four million dollars in twenty fourteen. And um so we have almost doubled it in the last five years. Uh though I would say that's very unusual and um just speaking with my peers quite a bit in the last couple of months. As we're trying to fi- make sense of all of the grants and the requirements and just the crisis itself. Uh we're in a very fortunate situation. Um there's a lot of cities out there across the state and I'm sure the country who are worried about making the next payroll. And uh what we've done with general fund, especially the council, is essentially saved. Sorry. That is an important distinction. I apologize. Twenty point three million dollars is what we have in general fund. That is a huge difference. Um so we've gone from nine point three million dollars in two thousand and fourteen. To twenty point three million dollars in two thousand and nineteen, at the end of two thousand and nineteen. Um so it, it took us five years to double it. Uh of course, those five years were really good economic years for us. We had good building permits. Uh revenue and good sales tax revenue and um uh so. Hopefully, we, we will keep having those years, but uh regardless, we have twenty million dollars to fall back on.
Okay, thank you very much. That's uh very insightful on potential options moving forward as we need to reallocate and balance funds.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Anybody else?
This is Councilmember Maloney. Um Ms. Sigdell, um when I'm, so, so if I understand correctly, basically, we'd be going back to um. With, with the, with the overall net loss that you're looking at, um we'd be looking at going back to basically the end of twenty eighteen in terms of general fund balance. Is that, is that approximately accurate?
That is correct.
So I, 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 you know, I, I, I can't speak highly enough to staff's efforts and um. Um especially our previous council and, and, and their fiscal prudence in making sure that we were in, in such a good, good stead. And, and weren't spending all the money we were giving in. So I just, I just wanna, you know, extend my congratulations and, and to their foresight. And that, that allow us to, to be able to look at this and go, alright, you know, we can, we're not. We're not looking at how do we make sure that Ms. Sigdell uh continues to receive her paycheck. Um as well as all of our, you know, wonderful poli- police officers and firefighters and everyone. Uh that's, I, I think that's, that's absolutely fantastic. Um I sent out some questions by email, and I know that um. That uh Mr. Zabel and Ms. Sigdell uh responded to those earlier, and um I appreciate the uh, the extra. Description as to how conservative um your estimates are. Uh I certainly hope, and I know we all hope, that we will be back to. Back to business and back to some sort of normal, normal state of affairs uh sooner rather than later. And I appreciate that. Um I guess I'm looking fo- I'll, I'll look forward to how we can reduce our expenses. Because um certainly, I, we know that as we move forward into fiscal year twenty-one, um we just simply don't know how this is gonna look. And so this is a great time for us to be prudent and, and um, and conservative in our expenditures as well. Um yeah, so I'm, I'm looking forward to our next conversation as well, which is um how do we make sure that our. Some of our businesses, our business owners who are certainly not um as fiscally sound. Um as, as the city's been fortunate enough to be, how, how we can help make sure that they are able to help weather this storm a little better, so. Uh thank you. I appreciate the uh answer to that email. I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Anybody else before we move on? Well, thank you, Ms. Sigdell, for that information, and looking forward to uh. To move, you know, moving forward and, and continuing to see what, what, what it is we're gonna have to do to, to maintain, you know, what we're doing today, so. And you know, this, this pandemic is, it's gonna. E- even if it was to be over next month, there's still gonna be a residual of, of getting back to where we at. You know, where we were at, so um again, like Mr. Maloney said, you know, thank you for. Um the work that has been done in the past and uh looking forward to getting back to this, the same situation. In the event that something else happens, so thank you very much. Alright, next, uh we'll get to uh Mr. White uh on the coronavirus relief fund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and Council. As Council certainly recalls, I'm sure, on May eleventh, uh council approved uh use of the Community Development Block. Grant Cares Program funding of roughly four hundred and thirty-four thousand. And also approved use of home consortium uh unallocated funds of approximately five hundred thousand. All for some form of COVID nineteen relief. In addition to that nearly one million dollars, uh the city of Pasco has received approximately two point two five. Million dollars from Washington State Department of Commerce through a package called the Coronavirus Relief Fund. It can be used for a number of COVID nineteen-related expenses, uh some of which you've already heard about. But Ms. Sigdell will discuss in a little more detail in just a minute. As uh staff works towards developing program guidelines for the use of the CDBG cares money. The home rental assistance money, and then whatever portion council decides to designate for COVID nineteen relief out of cares. Uh staff would very much appreciate from hearing council discussion on a number of the uh bulleted items in your agenda report. To speak to some of the issues and questions, it will be um at least hoping for some input from council. As we develop those program guidelines so that we have a program that reflects council's priorities. Uh so with that, uh I believe Ms. Sigdell will uh lead council through a very brief uh slide presentation. Uh, so with that, uh, I believe Miss Sigdel will uh lead Council through a very brief uh slide presentation on uh the essentials related to the uh cares program and some of the issues that are associated with it.
Thank you, Mr. White, and evening, Council. Uh, we, uh, what you have on the screen is um are the different types of funding that are available uh for us to uh assist local businesses uh with. And CDBG cares for four hundred and thirty-four thousand, the rental assistance home for uh five hundred thousand, and then the local cares um that is for two point three million dollars. And um, as as you know, local cares is uh for multiple um different um, uh, there's there's multiple different uses to that grant. Uh, a large part of it is reimbursement for combating COVID for local governments. Uh, but there's also component for economic assistance to businesses. Uh, we have still not heard from Commerce. In fact, we did hear a non-answer. They're still working through um, the details of how exactly the the grant is supposed to look like. But we do believe that if we uh structure the program a certain way, we could very likely meet the requirements of any grant um granting guidelines that uh Commerce would be coming back to us with. Um, s- so that we do not have to wait uh for their guidance. Um, so overall, CDBG cares, we know it's four hundred and thirty-four thousand, home rental assistance, half a million dollars. With local cares, uh, because we have uh a lot of uh cost that is COVID-related, but is essentially reallocated labor like we talked about early in the earlier presentation. So essentially, um, the the hours that I'm charging um or Mr. Zabel is charging that is related to COVID. But we were both budgeted for different types of activities. With local cares, we could get reimbursement for those hours. However, um, those are still hours and budget that the city can absorb because we would have spent that regardless. And so there is about, um, you know, it's an estimate, but um eight hundred thousand to a million dollars uh that we're recommending. We uh we take that reallocated labor cost um and um add to the additional nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars to help our community uh during this time. So this is just a recommendation. You can go lower, you can go higher. Um, and uh, but our recommendation is eight hundred to a million dollars. Overall, the guidance that we need from Council is on uh what kind of uh size of loans y- you want. Um, minimum, I think, is also as important as maximum um for both the rental assistance and the business loans. Um, and minimum residency and location requirements, uh, like for example, um, we have a lot of businesses that have Pasco's business license endorsement, but are from different other locations. So they do not have a physical location in Pasco. Um, so getting an idea of uh how you would like for us to um, to write the uh guidelines uh would be helpful. Um, also, would you like for us to do the award based on essential versus non-essential status? And the reason for that would be that a non-essential business would be completely closed and hence in greater need, whereas an essential business would have had a chance to keep open throughout the crisis. Uh, also on the frequency of eligibility, a one-time and or maybe eligible for future awards as well if more funds are available. Um, so those are some of the things that um Council discussion and a guidance uh would be greatly appreciated. Uh, furthermore, this is uh the grant structure that we are we're thinking of. Uh, one would be the re- rental assistance, um, and the funds available is half a million dollars. And it would go to uh residential tenants for uh rental assistance, and it would also pay for utilities as well. Uh, and then the business assistance would combine the um, uh, the the cares, CDBG cares and local cares together. Um, and um, so that's at least four hundred and thirty-four thousand plus whatever uh Council would like to allocate from local cares. And um, it can go, and then within that business assistance, we would have uh two different categories, which would be a micro enterprise, and that would be with employee counts of less than five. And then a small business with an employee count of five uh and less than five hundred. There's uh very few businesses, um, if any, I believe, that exceed more than five hundred based on the business, uh, based on what is reported on the business license um at City of Pasco. Uh, with that, uh, we would have to, for the program administration, we would of course have to finalize the program guidelines. And so discussion with Council and your guidance today would be critical for that. Um, and then we're also um uh, working to find a partner that can manage the program and and also so manage the program for us. But then also help the businesses with the application um so that we're not having people who do not have the resources to figure out exactly what the process is, how to get all of the documentation and be eligible for the program, be left out in the cold because they don't have those resources. So we're also looking uh for those partners who can help us with helping the businesses with the applications as well. And that is all we have.
Thank you, Mrs. Sigdel. I'll start with the first question of uh, you know, so there's two point three million dollars available for for uh for help, correct?
Yes.
So of the two point, what what's approximate percentage that we'll need to go into managing this program?
Uh, we are, Mr. White, you wanna speak to that a little bit? Uh, I'm sorry, are you talking about local cares?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, very little because we're very adept at uh handling federal and local grants. There's labor cost, of course. We've spent uh quite a few hours, but nothing that is above and beyond uh what is budgeted so far.
Okay. Uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty tough, uh, you know, to 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 um, to make a decision on essential versus non-essential because there's some uh, there's there's gonna be quite a few businesses that that were um considered essential that still didn't, you know, that still weren't able to even get half of their normal um, sales or or um business that they normally would get. So that's gonna be a tough one, and maybe we can uh, we can brainstorm that one a little bit, but um but I I guess I'll open it up to the Council and see. Uh, I'm pretty sure there's comments. Anybody have a comment or questions?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is a Councilmember Maloney. Um, I have a I have a number of thoughts on this matter, uh, and including exactly that same concern you just outlined, if you if you don't mind. Um, so so first, um, Miss Sigdel, um, on one of your slides, you indicated that we were talking about the size of loan, minimum, maximum for rental assistance and business loans. And then we later ta- talk about it as grant, um, as as a grant. Um, what was the intention of this? Is this intended to be a loan of to small businesses or is this intended to be a a grant to cover their their lost revenue um while the while the government has shut them down?
That is, my error is supposed to be a grant.
Thank you. I I appreciate that clarification because that's, to me, that's a very, a very different thing. Um, did did we get any recommendations from uh chambers of commerce or the Downtown Pasco Development Authority um in terms of criteria of what their their members need from from grant programs such as this?
Uh, Mr. Maloney, this is Rick White, and uh we we did not get uh anything specific that I would categorize as criteria for uh either the amount or the type of assistance. We have been in discussions with the Downtown Pasco Development Authority and uh, first of all, in a number of fronts, one of which would be to help with the administration of the uh, of the program itself. Uh, but uh, nothing in the way of criteria aside from several businesses, and I believe those comments were emailed to you earlier today that talked about the need for uh such a grant or grant.
Okay, I appreciate that. I I I would, I mean, uh, you know, to some extent, when I'm thinking of criteria for for helping someone, um, the first thing I think is, well, what do they need as opposed to what do I think they need? So um, if we if we end up with any guidance on that, that would that would really help me um um, that'd help me be able to 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 devote on it. Maybe I think I was assuming we were hoping to move forward in this program soon. Um, I'd be very interested in in if we can get feedback from those organizations because, again, they represent the business community. Uh, we should know what our businesses want before telling them what they get. Um. Um, I don't have much comment on rental assistance just because simply I don't know how our current program is is uh, or program's uh function. Um, but certainly, um, you know, we know that some people have been out of work for for months. Um, and and hopefully we can sup- you know, supplement their um, uh, recover their rent for several months to make sure that they're they're not evicted at the end of this uh time for just for being unemployed without their, without being their fault. Um, does does staff have a recommendation for what the lower end would be for a worth it? Uh, there is, of course, always an amount of um administrative burden for both the um individual recipient for a busi- for a business grant or something like that, as well as staff time. Um, so I mean, when you think of like a thousand dollars, it's probably, we're gonna spend as much time uh providing the grant as that that they're gonna receive. Is there any sort of um recommendation that staff has? Um, in terms of what what the what the administrative cost is for one of these?
Well, I don't know if it's a a staff recommendation. Uh, I think we were thinking on a a s- a a potential guideline range of between five and ten thousand dollars based on need.
As as the lower end or as a total range?
No, as the both of the the floor and the ceiling. So five thousand dollars minimum and then ten thousand dollars maximum. But but again, those are, I'm sorry, Mr. Maloney, those are tha- tha- that's where we are right now with uh our staff discussions only.
Great. No, thank you. I just I just wanted to get an idea of what um what made some sense at the lower end. Uh, I am thinking of a maximum of higher than that. I mean, what we're ultimately have have um, what the state shutdown has done is basically cost so far about three months of lost revenue. Is there any way we can, we can tie a maximum to, say, something like more like fifty thousand dollars, where we're talking about being able to help um, you know, twenty to thirty businesses that if if everyone were to receive the maximum, but also um or or maxing it out based on a documented lost revenue, uh, whichever it's a lower? Is there something that we can do at that effect?
Yes, certainly. Especially particularly documented loss of revenue.
Because I think tha- that to me, when we're talking about, this has been a shutdown for, you know, for for three months so far. Um, and we know that they're unfortunate, we're probably not gonna get through the phases very quickly. And if we were to tie it to lost revenue, then that takes into account kind of uh, uh, Mr. Martinez's concern about um, essential versus non-essential. If we're talking about a documented lost revenue, then I I don't I don't care where 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 we told, if the business was forced to shut down, uh, rather, I want, I just wanna look at making them whole. Ideally, right? We add this, the government has told them to stop, the government um, and in all its layers should should um not force them to lose a whole lot of money while they while they're forced to stop. So if we can, so based on replacement revenue, I think is something that I'd be very interested in. Um, I think that would help with some of that. And then I think yeah, finally, um, my only other comment would be versus one-time versus uh future awards. Um, I can't imagine why we wouldn't be okay with future awards. Again, if it's tied, if it's tied to um documented lost revenue, then I think that gives us great criteria to say, well, if we, if this goes on for another two months, we've helped you for three months, there's still funds available and you're out for another two months. Well, why wouldn't we want to uh provide the funding if we have it? So those are kind of kind of my 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 shotgun approach uh uh comments on this. Um, in terms of thoughts on how on how we can perhaps um brighten this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Appreciate that. Um, I I would also like to add with that uh on on lost revenue, maybe uh just an idea is on uh a square footage of of their property or um of their facility. Uh, I think would make a a huge difference in trying to ration it out because, you know, obviously, if we just give one amount um, five or 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 maximum of ten, well, it really, to make it more fair, I think we should include the square footage of their facility to make it uh to where that people have bigger facilities and are paying more rent would uh would get slightly more than those who have just small facilities. So that would be another idea is on square footage and lost revenue, a documentation, and that could be, that could that's just another thought that I had. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Alvarado.
Go ahead, Mr. Alvarado.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And uh, yeah, I do have a couple of thoughts and uh some some of my thoughts were already covered. So I appreciate Council members. Sounds like we're in uh alignment in some of these things. Um, I think a few uh weeks back, we we were really, um, you know, wanting to make sure we maximize the uh our ability to help our small businesses. So two things that are from from the presentation that I think stood out to me, one was uh the uh size of small business that goes one to five and then five to five hundred. Uh, and I'm not, I'm not sure the uh, the 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 reasoning for that, I'm obviously that, that's outside of my general scope of understanding typically, but it it seems that it work- working um kind of a still fairly small businesses with perhaps some national businesses that would hire less than five hundred. And so I'm wondering if uh categorizing it a little bit more to to prioritize the smaller businesses. Uh, and then the second piece, um, folks who are are based out of Pasco, who are uh, who are starting businesses in Pasco and things like that. I don't know the legality of that or how that works or how you differentiate between those two. Uh, but but I hate for, I would hate for large chains that have the ability to survive to be treated similarly as folks who don't, uh, who are starting their first business and they put out everything they have into their own businesses here in Pasco, um, uh, versus folks who have the ability to swing back because, you know, they have just those kind of uh um, uh, businesses that are, you know, national. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. That makes sense to me. Uh, there was somebody else?
This is Councilwoman Roach, and I would just like to uh say I appreciate Councilmember Alvarado's uh comments. I'd like to echo those. Um, I did get one request. Um, I guess I'll back up one second and just say I I still am in alignment with uh what seems to be the rest of Council's uh idea to provide assistance to small business, but I wanted to put this forth um because I just got this request yesterday. Um, and it's from a a gal who is a longtime Pasco resident. She doesn't live here anymore. She's the granddaughter um of someone who lives in one of the senior uh senior facilities that was uh quarantined for COVID, and she's seeking to know uh whether we as a city uh with this, the the relief fund would be willing to uh use some of it to provide uh funeral cost assistance. And so, you know, I had seen that part of the related expenses uh were medical and public health expenses and previously, you know, I talked to Mr. Zabel about maybe helping the Health District, which has a diminishing budget. Uh, but wanted to just put that forward to the rest of Council as a consideration that we do have, um, we do have a request from residents for for that matter.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I could add uh one thing, um the information that is not quite available yet um is some of the guidelines from Department of Commerce. And if they do come back and say um square footage allocation is not allowed, but um, but a certain other allocation is allowed, we might have to change that. Um, ju- just to kind of let Council know. And of course, we will come back to you with that update. We did receive an email from them on Thursday um, essentially as a follow-up to our multiple um inquiries and um, essentially, they've not worked out the details yet. So that has been the answer. So I just want Council to be aware of that um in terms of that pot of money.
Thank you. Appreciate that information.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. R-
Uh, I think another comment, uh, you know, the the concept of uh national versus local came up, and I I think we need to be careful on that. And I, I think we need to be careful on that line. I absolutely understand the sentiment, but we also have fair and equal treatment. Uh, that could be an issue if we don't do this properly. So we'll, we'll look at that, we'll look at that issue as well.
Sure. And, and of course, you know, the council is just coming up with ideas and then obviously.
Understood.
Yeah, obviously there'll be some, it seems like all the, the, the most common, uh, common approach, sense approach for me is like it's restricted for some whatever reason, but, um, but no, totally understand. We're just trying to give staff, uh, uh, you know, some, some ammunition or, or just some information to, to maybe help go forward and, and come back with something, um, with all the, the required things that need to be done. So.
I think would be our intent and really appreciate the council discussion tonight is to collect this information and we, we happy with the dialogue. And certainly if there's more, uh, council wants to add before we finish tonight, but we'll take that back. Uh, look at what possibilities and, and what ideas we can spur from, from what's been presented tonight and then bring this back to council.
Mr. Milley, did you, did you have something? I thought I heard somebody else chime in.
Yeah, I was trying to chime in. Sometimes I have difficulty. Um, as far as on the non-essential and essential, I know my thought is the non-essential aren't making anything. Uh, where the essential is making some. So, I mean, I, I want them both to be helped, but I, I think that some of the non-essential should be prioritized a little on top of the list versus the essential, just because again, they're not getting any kind of financial assistance. And I would just hate to see people in the downtown clothing shops, barber shops totally go out because they have nothing. It's a huge concern of myself, just knowing a lot of these neighbors.
Understand. Thank you, Mr. Milley. Anybody else?
This is Serrano. Um, I do have some thoughts, you know, we're going to have business owners who may have also contracted or cons- had the virus. Sorry, it's getting late. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering if we're going to take a graduated approach where we may allocate more than one type of assistance to a particular individual. Um, I think we should probably be aware of those circumstances. I'm not suggesting that's the right approach. But, you know, if I'm a business owner and I got sick, um, or if we were to increase the options to, as Councilwoman Roach suggested, uh, funeral expenses and I had a family member die due to COVID, we may want to consider that. I'm not suggesting that's appropriate to allocate that much, uh, that amount of resources to one individual, but that's one thing worth considering. Um, I know, uh, City Manager Zabel indicated concern of expressing preference towards, um, you know, local or chain, uh, national-based. I'm wondering if we do have some consideration like that on the rental front where landlords are locally based. Um, as we consider the rental assistance, uh, essentially keeping money flowing through to, again, local owners of, of residences where people are potentially facing eviction, uh, in the forthcoming future. Um, again, I don't know if there's an issue with, uh, a discrimination type action that could be brought by larger. Um, but it certainly in my preference where we have a small, say apartment complex or something of that nature that's locally owned as opposed to sending it out to, um, you know, a major chain that owns, you know, millions of retail places. Um, so those are some thoughts that I, I'm, I'm having and certainly I like the concept of, uh, essential versus non-essential or maybe kind of clete your case of how dire were your straits, you know? Did you shut down? Would this revive you? Um, how close are you to shutting down? Uh, those types of graduated approaches and application, um, because if we have a business that may have shut their doors, but twenty thousand dollars is the right number to get them reopening and front it for two more months. Maybe that's more valuable to them or potentially our community than twenty thousand to, uh, you know, line someone's pocket, if you will. So, uh, and if we do consider a square footage, um, as the mayor suggested, in addition to not just rent payments, you're also looking at electricity and other ancillary bills that will build up, you know? If you have a ten thousand square foot store, it's going to cost more money to heat and light that than it would a thousand square foot store. So if you are essential, uh, but your sales have taken a hit and, um, you're still heating the same space, your bills are going to stay the same. Uh, your bills won't discriminate on your profits. So just some thoughts there. I don't know if that's helpful or just nine fifteen ramblings of Serrano.
No, thank you very much, Mr. Serrano. Uh, I've given the nod from Dave Zabel, um, they'll take this information and, uh, and come back to us with, um, what they can come up with. So thank you very much. Did we miss anybody? Anybody else?
This is.
Uh, let's go with, uh, Councilwoman, uh, uh, Brajas, please.
Just wanted to echo what, uh, Mr. Councilmember Milley said, uh, regarding our businesses in downtown and supporting them. Um, I, I know that we, several of them are close to shutting down because, uh, you know, they're missing out on a lot of, uh, their sales and profits. And so I'd just like to, um, push for more support for very small businesses and, and, um, one question too, um, I know the situation is, is a little dire due to, uh, COVID. Do we have, um, funding to help businesses that are looking to start up in Pasco? Do we have a program that, uh, helps them with like, I don't know, uh, the business startup funding or something?
Do we have an existing program, Councilwoman Brajas?
Yes, that is my question. Do we have an existing program that will aid a startup business?
We, we, we do, we do not. We generally steer people to the council of governments with their, uh, loan program.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's, that guides me to where I need to send people. Uh, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Maloney, did you have some last words?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I was just going to, um, ask staff if, um, obviously the, the CARES Act funding is very limited in nature. However, we received some guidance from the AG that, um, that city funding can be used during the emergency somewhat differently than is typically restricted by our state constitution and state laws. Um, I appreciate the thought of the city being able to help someone in dire need with funeral expenses. Um, is that something that we could do with general fund revenue outside of the CARES Act funding in some limited way? Um, I, I hate the thought of someone in this crisis right now, especially, um, not being able to, to, to deal with this.
You know, I think, uh, that actually has enough of a legal edge on it. I want to, I want to ask, uh, City Attorney, uh, Mr. Ferguson to weigh in.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you now, Mr. Ferguson.
Okay, great. Yeah, uh, Mr. Maloney, I didn't get all your question there. It was kind of cutting out, so we wouldn't mind repeating it.
Certainly. My, my question was whether outside of the CARES Act funding, if during this current state of emergency, um, related to the pandemic, if we were, if the city were be, to be able to use, um, general, um, funds to help someone, for example, cover their, cover funeral expenses if they're in dire need or anything like that, what the legal implications thereof. I know we received a, uh, um, Attorney, Attorney General guidance that there would be more flexibility during this, um, emergency orders to be able to use city funding in a way that we typically would not be able to.
Sure. Yeah, no, the, the basic analysis that the Attorney General's opinion went into was, um, do, would cities be able to offer financial assistance that, uh, typically, uh, would, uh, most folks would, uh, think is, is gifting of public funds in a way that's different now considering the emergency crisis that we're under. And the Attorney General, uh, uh, their, their office believes that, uh, most likely, um, a court would interpret, uh, providing financial assistance to businesses who have lost revenue or who are, um, not able to make the same, um, I guess the, who are less than when they started before this crisis, for, for lack of a better way to describe it. Um, the city could extend funds to help them essentially get back to that same level. The analysis really kind of hinged on whether we could help businesses kind of get back to where they were before the crisis versus giving money to businesses to increase profits going, uh, forward. And that was kind of the distinction that they've made is that because of this emergency crisis, we could, uh, use some funds, uh, that we otherwise normally wouldn't be able to use. So, um, with that kind of in the background, I would say that it would, it would be pretty, uh, I would, I would be pretty resistant to, um, think that we could get in the business of being able to give funds to things that would not necessarily have a public benefit, uh, even to get them back to where they were prior to the crisis. So that sounds, uh, with regard to funeral expenses, that sounds like that would probably still fall under a gifting situation just, and, and keep in mind, I'm, I'm totally talking off the cuff here. So, um, but, uh, yeah, I would be really, uh, I'd really, really, uh, wary of, of a situation like that versus a situation where we can help businesses who have essentially been harmed and we're attempting to get them back to a status quo situation.
So I'd say give us. I appreciate the, I appreciate that, that, those thoughts there. Um, thank you.
I, I was going to interject that, uh, you know, perhaps council, uh, again, good dialogue. Uh, you know, perhaps we need to have, that, that gives us some, I think staff, some things to maybe talk about, bounce some ideas around, uh, how we could help potentially an individual, uh, in a way that meets the, meets the tests that we would need to meet and bring that back to council.
Perfect. All right. With that, um, that was the last item of, on, uh, item, uh, number five. And now we will move right on to, uh, we, we've been in this, uh, we've been going for two, almost two and a half hours now. And we're, we're almost at the end of it, but we'll move right along to miscellaneous council discussion. And we have, uh, we have a Benton Franklin County letter. Mr. Zabel?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I think it's a timely discussion, given the discussion we just had, but, uh, Governor Inslee enacted the Safe Start Program on May twenty ninth, which moved us, moved us out of stay home, stay healthy and, uh, into Safe Start, which is a phased reopening of the state. So, uh, right at this moment, actually Franklin County and Benton, Franklin, uh, Benton County Health District, uh, has been working with the two counties and, uh, with the other cities, uh, in those counties in an effort to, to move into that next phase in the state, uh, in the state, excuse me, Safe Start Plan, which would be phase two. We're in phase one now and councils, I think, uh, based on this discussion and prior discussions, uh, very aware of the limits in phase one. And phase two is certainly doesn't get us back anywhere close to normal, but it does get, get us started. And so I think there's a lot of folks anxious for that to, that to occur. So, uh, for council's consideration is a letter. Uh, staff has drafted for the mayor's signature on behalf of council. Uh, that letter would be the Secretary of Health, uh, John Weissman, uh, supporting Benton Franklin County's, uh, request for waivers. Uh, also included, based on some input, uh, we received, we'd sent the letter out under separate coverage, uh, council, um, uh, last Friday. Uh, did receive some feedback from that. And so we're proposing to add a paragraph between, and I, I provided counsel that, uh, in an email. But in the event you didn't, all of you didn't get it, uh, just prior to the meeting, uh, I just quickly read that paragraph that we proposed to add in between the existing letter we sent you in between paragraphs three and four. So, uh, the addition would read as follows, Benton and Franklin Counties have been hit harder, uh, than many other areas. The high percentage of essential workers and jobs where telecommuting is not an option. The early lack of testing, uh, and testing avail- availability has recently increased. This recently, this greatly impacted the known data of the spread of, uh, the coronavirus. Phase two reopening of the area businesses will, was required PPE and engineered solutions. Will provide our residents with a safe, safe alternatives to help lessen the number of businesses going under. Uh, jobs from being lost for as long as years and start the long, uh, hard process, uh, revitalizing an economy that has been shut down for nearly three months. So we're proposing to kind of slip that into the letter. Uh, so I, I did see a couple of typos in that letter, but if we could get council's general consensus with, uh, content of the letter, we can clean that up and have it ready for the mayor's signature.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Zabel. Any comments on that letter?
Yeah, this is Serrano. I want to make, uh, one small suggestion and let me see if I can open it and stay on here. It's in the one, two, three, uh, in the second paragraph, we talk about that people are increasingly tempted to travel. But I think, um, at least anecdotally on Facebook and other social media platforms, I'm finding that people aren't tempted but are in fact leaving the area to, um, go to Idaho or Oregon or other places. So I think rather than saying that people are tempted to demonstrate a true impact, we could just state that people are increasingly traveling to those areas with fewer restrictions. Um, and again, it's maybe anecdotal, but I know this just based on friends that I'm talking to, uh, my future plan. Um, so I think it demonstrates a greater impact. Other than that, I appreciate the thought and it's a, it's a quality letter that, uh, hopefully helps bump us.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Anybody else? Is that all you have for, uh, miscellaneous?
That's all I have.
Okay, so, uh, there is one thing other than, uh, does anybody else have any, any other miscellaneous council discussion that they would like to bring up?
Yes, I had one thing. This is Councilwoman Roach. Um, I heard, uh, Mayor Protem Brajas, uh, refer to the Pasco demonstration on Saturday. And I just wanted to, um, say, and this dovetails with our previous discussions with COVID nineteen. Um, you know, I did come down there and the message that I have consistently been giving to our community, whether it's in Pasco or tri-cities is that, uh, we still have to maintain that physical distance and wear masks and, uh, while we're out in public and in indoors. And, and so, uh, I did attend the demonstration in my vehicle. I honked and waved, uh, with my family, but I did not get out. I did see a lot of people at, um, different Pasco churches, church members and faith organizations there and civic leaders from Concejo Latino. And so that, that gave me some, some hope. But I just wanted to say for myself that I wanted to affirm to our black community members in Pasco that I do, do believe that black lives matter. Uh, I want to say that I'm committed to collectively working with our African-American community here in Pasco to ensure that they feel safe and they feel valued. And I know that respecting, acknowledging, celebrating the diversity of Pasco adds value to my own personal life, but also to the greater good of this, this city. So I think it's really important to note that there is a difference between not being racist and being actively anti-racist. And I hope that, you know, the city of Pasco embraces, uh, and I think they do, uh, being actively anti-racist. When we have people here in our community, you know, have had a lot of conversations recently with, uh, a lot of African-American people in our community who went to Pasco High and, and they remember, you know, they lived through when Kennewick and Richland were sundown towns. And, you know, I hope that you all have a chance to hear from them firsthand, those stories of what it was like to be on a high school sports team and have to be bussed back home, uh, before it, before sunset. And that's in our recent history. So that just brings me to, you know, the, the fact that people across tri-cities are having, you know, some disturbing interactions uh, with an unauthorized armed group in tri-cities. And I've been inundated with phone calls, with text messages, emails, letters, Facebook messages, you name it, about how we as council are prepared to handle the presence of these groups. And I just want people to know that I've already been addressing this with our city manager, with our police chief. And I will continue to promote policies and practices in our city that are actively anti-racist. So I just want to affirm that for, for those folks who are looking for a clear message, um, that that's what I'm, I'm willing to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Anybody else?
Mr. Martinez, um.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
This is Councilmember Maloney. Um, just to, um, I will actually.
Just to, I actually wanted to follow up on an action we took last week, which was to form the subcommittee of the council to work on putting together a resolution or proclamation for this, for the, to bring to the city council. We met as a subcommittee last Tuesday to discuss whether kind of where, what direction we're going to go and how we're going to go about this. And Thursday, we met with some community members and including a number of representatives from, from groups throughout the, throughout the, primarily Pasco, including like Concejo Latino and, and Access and, and the Tri-Cities inclusivity and diversity. I, I, I forget what exactly the acronym was, my apologies. Anyway, so we met with some community members as well as, as our own inclusivity and diversity and equity commission. And we were able to really hear from them what they need to hear from, from us as a city. And I don't think we had a whole lot of surprises. We, we, there are certainly some, some spots where I think we're all aware that, that, that we have a community that's hurting. And, and so we're making some great progress on that. And our current plan is to have something in the packet for, for approval by council next Monday. So I just wanted to let you know that, that the subcommittee has been working hard. And Ms. Brahas and Mr. Alvarado and I have certainly been spending time, our own personal time as well as working with staff in the community to make sure that that message is the right message for, for us, for Pasco and for the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Anybody, anything, anybody else before I make some closing remarks?
Yeah, this is Councilman Serrano. I, I'd just like to say that I know that this is a, this is a very tough time for a lot of us. And I want to recognize our city staff and Pasco PD for the strides that they've made in the past several years in improving their visibility and community presence. I talked with several officers, I've seen them interact with various members of the community. And I've heard a lot of positive things about them. I look back on when we created what was then the inclusivity commission and has since changed names. And with the second clause, we reaffirm that the city council of Pasco desires to protect and encourage our diverse culture as well as to protect the constitutional rights of its citizens, including the right to be free from discriminatory practices and the fair application of law to demonstrate that Pasco is a welcoming and inclusive city where laws apply equally to all who live here. And where all individuals, families and businesses are welcome. And certainly we're not perfect. But I do think that on a whole, at least from my perspective, the city, the city employees are trying our best. And I just want to recognize those efforts. And I appreciate it that our city is doing what we can to protect all constitutional rights and to protect its citizens. And this is, again, it protects all citizens and all constitutional rights that equally apply. So I appreciate the city for doing what it does.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano.
And Councilman Maloney, I'd also like to echo what Serrano's saying. And also we'll go a little step further that, for our council member that has done police ride alongs and knows a lot of these officers in the Pasco PD for the last 15 years. I'd just say that their professionalism and the way that they do care about the community and the extra training that they've gone through, I have the utmost respect for these guys. And I'm just glad that we have such a good police department here. And I'm just thankful to live in Pasco and to know these guys as my friends. Just want to say that. Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Okay, if there's nobody else, one last chance. I, I have something I, I want to say. And I hope, I hope I can get through this. Cause I've been thinking about it. It's been weighing heavy in my heart all weekend. So I just, I just want to share some words. Many times I've, I've had a lot of emails and comments about people wanting me to speak up more and, and do more on both sides of the spectrum. And, you know, a lot of times we, and I've also heard in many ways that keeping silent is just as bad as, as, as somebody who commits a crime. And I've really been, yeah. I told myself I wouldn't do this again. But I've, I've really been gathering information and researching and trying to dig deep because, you know, I'm not really interested in being on the side. I'm, I'm more interested in finding a solution. But so many times when people are trying to figure out a solution, you know, they just don't know what to do and they, you know, perhaps it's interpreted as silence. But, but I've been really trying to dig deep and figure out, you know, what it, what is it that we can do as a community to, to have a solution to this? And, and I don't know. I still don't know to this day. I mean, there's a lot more wise men than me that couldn't figure out, but have done their part in trying to make strides in, in bringing peace and harmony and unity to our people and to our community. So I would just like to say that, that I, it's not that I've been silent. It's that I've been trying to figure it out. And I just like to say, first of all, that I was, I'm, I'm so proud of Pasco. I said it last week, and I'm honored to be a part of this community in which people are just doing what they know how to do to go try to express themselves and, and make a difference and, you know, and, and have their voice be heard. I actually drove, I actually drove by several times on Core Street as they were protesting and, and communicating. I actually even went to Kennewick in Clearwater and, and saw the crowd there and honked and tried to show my support. So I, I was there. I just didn't stop and, and participate on the sidewalk. But I hear your voice. And one of the things I wanted to bring up, I just wanted, I just wanted to try to, to help somehow. And, you know, a lot of times, and I don't know if, and I don't know if you can see me on TV right now, but if I hold up this piece of paper and you, you know, most people can see, see what, what a piece of paper or a container or a label says on this side of the paper. But if I'm standing on this side, I, I really can't see what it says on that side, but I have to make a conscious effort. I have to go around and see what it, what it looks like on the other side. And many people think that if you go to that other side, you know, they're either afraid or feel like they have to give something up to go see what's on the other side. But until you've been on both sides, you'll never know what, you'll never know how it could benefit you or, or how, how it would affect your life. And you're just afraid of the unknown and afraid of, afraid of what it might cost to you or your family and what safety concerns may come up. But I want to challenge everyone here today and everybody who's listening to take that leap of faith. You see, a couple of years ago, I, I attended a funeral from one of our longtime African-American citizens here in Pasco. And, and as we were attending this funeral, I couldn't help but notice as we were in this, in this facility, in this church, couldn't help but notice there was at least four to five different ethnicities, different races that were in this congregation to celebrate the life of this, of this individual. And for, and for two hours, approximately two hours, we were celebrating this life. And if, and I looked around and in that time span, there was, there was no color. Sorry about that. But for two hours, there was no color. There was a sense of calm and unity. Everybody put their differences aside. And it was one of the most beautiful feelings I, I could ever feel. And I sure hope it doesn't take somebody's death to do that, somebody's life to do that. But for those two hours, it was the most amazing feeling. And then it came to me and I came up with a conclusion. And I want to be careful on, on what my conclusion is because it's not about me. But I just know that for those moments and that feeling, I came to the conclusion of what it took to get rid of seeing color and caring for mankind and humanity. And so what I want to encourage everybody today is whether it's faith, whether it's science, whether it's Mother Nature, whatever it is that you, that you believe in and that you feel is a higher power. As for that strength to be able to look on the other side and try to understand, because we're, we're never going to understand the whole picture. But once you go to the other side, you can celebrate, you can celebrate what you have in common and respect what you don't. And we just need to show that for all humanity. We're never going to all be the same. If this world, if we were all the same, it, it wouldn't be a, a beautiful world. But again, you celebrate what, those things that you have in common and you respect those that you don't. And you will find that once you can do that, it brings so much peace and unity and harmony to a community. And just try to understand and see the beauty and what everybody has to offer and forget about race, forget about color, but just think about mankind and think about us as human, as humans. And let's just do what's right. This, this violence, this injustice that occurred in Minneapolis should never happen. And I want to make a commitment to you. And you heard it from the rest of the, or most of the other council members, and I'm sure I can speak for all of them. We in the city of Pasco and the people who sit before you are not here because it's fun. We're here because we're committed to provide the best quality of life and, and justice for all. And I have personally talked to the, the city manager, Dave Zabel, and our chief of police. And, and they are committed and it's our obligation to make sure that we are committed to make sure we always improve. We will make mistakes, but we've learned from our mistakes. We've done so many things to improve and how to handle situations. And then to top it off, we have quality citizens that behave themselves like they did last Saturday to protest and did it peacefully. I, I don't know what else we could ask for. But what I'm challenging you with today is to take that challenge to go to the other side and celebrate the, what we have in common and respect those that are differences because we have so many more things in common than we do, than the differences that we have. But somehow or another, there's a force that wants to, that wants to take us down, the, the, the wrong road or the wrong path. But let's get beyond color and let's just do what's right for humanity. And that's what I ask and challenge each and every one of you. And I hope that this is speaking out for those who don't think I speak out. And whether or not it is, I'm going to do my best and I'm committed to bring a quality of life and safety and unity to this community. And I know that all our council members want to do the same thing. I appreciate our police officers, I appreciate our staff. I appreciate the people who put on peaceful rallies. And I appreciate the people who, who want to do what's right. And in many ways, it could be interpreted in different ways. But the reality is, is to celebrate what we have in common and, and respect our differences and look beyond color and go into humanity. Well, thank you very much for allowing me to give you this, share this with you. It was, it was coming from my heart. It, it's something that's been weighing on me. And, and, and that's why we're here, just to serve and to be served. And you know, for many people who, who have privileges, well, I just want to share one more thing that perhaps there, there's people that have privileges. And I can tell you that it's been an honor to, to, to serve this community. And I feel like so many times people treat me with respect and I get these privileges of just being accepted in many places that I go. But with those privileges comes responsibility. And it's our duty to make sure that those that are most vulnerable and those that need the most help and those that are asking for help, get help. And that we just, we just don't oversee them and we help those that are in need. So if somebody comes to my house or I get invited to somebody's house and I get this special privilege, it's my obligation to make sure everybody who's hungry gets something to eat and everybody who's thirsty gets something to drink. So I just wanted to add that and that's, and that's our, that's what my motto is. And I hope that, that that's something that our staff and our council as leaders can ensure that wherever we go, that, that we're accounting for everybody else to make sure everybody gets treated like a human being should be, should be treated. So thank you very much for that. I, I wanted to be as brief as possible. Thank you for allowing me to share my heart. And with that, I'm going to go to the next, the next subject. And that is that we do have an executive session tonight. The city council will now meet in executive session. The purpose of this executive session is to discuss litigation or potential litigation for legal counsel. The executive session is expected to last approximately 45 minutes and will be attended by the city manager and city attorney. No action will be taken during the executive session. At the conclusion of the executive session, I will reconvene the meeting of the city council, entertain any actions desired by the council and adjourn the meeting. So with that, I'm going to take a five-minute recess, take a little break and we'll move on to the executive session and be back in approximately 45 minutes. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting and allowing us to, to share and, and move on with business. And I, I just hope that we can make this place the place that we deserve to have, have it be. Thank you very much. We are now in the executive session.
Out of executive session, but we are gonna ask for an extension for 15 more minutes. So at approximately 11:55, we'll be coming back to out of executive session. So we're still in executive session till 10:55. Thank you.
...
Okay, we are back from executive session. And if there's no further questions or reports, this it is 10:56 and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.